Good afternoon. Good afternoon, welcome to the March 13th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call Roe, please.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kine. Councilmember Joyce. Councilmember Robinson. And Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you, please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have founding and lead pastor Stephen Chappell of Coastline Baptist Church. Pastor?
Let's pray. My father, we are thankful to call this incredible city our home. Lord, I pray that you would help us to enjoy all the blessings you've given us here. We acknowledge tonight through prayer of our need for you and with all the blessings there are challenges. And so we thank you for our city's leaders. We pray that even this evening you'd give them wisdom and insight. And Lord, we just pray that you guide them and bless them along the way. We thank you tonight also for our first responders and pray that you would give them the wisdom they need in their work. Give them safety, give their families grace as they're serving. And we pray that you would guide and lead and that we would follow by faith. We pray this prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Thank you Pastor Chappell. Remain standing and join me with a pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One mission under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. And I would like to announce that item number 13 has been pulled from the agenda. Item number 13 and will appear in April with notice. So, item number 13, thank you. Right, thank you. And this is the proclamations and presentations part of the meeting where we get to celebrate our leaders, our special people in our city and what they do for our city of Oceanside. And for this month, we are honoring Women's History Month. So we do have two organizations, yeah, that's it. We do have two organizations with us. Women's Club of Oceanside, come on down. And also, North County African American Women's Association, come on down. So I will be handing the mic to Linda Berry, who's the president of the North County African American Women's Association, and Rose Tettin, the president of Women's Club of Oceanside. After I do the proclamation and then we'll be hearing from them. So, it's one proclamation, but each one has something about their particular organization, yes. So proclamation in honor of National Women's History Month 2024, Women's Club of Oceanside. Whereas, the national campaign to honor the role that women have played in the history of the United States began in California in 1978 with Women's History Week around March 8th International Women's Day. Then with the Presidential Proclamation in 1980 by President Carter for National Women's Week. 14 states followed with declarations extending the week to Women's History Month, leading to congressional action in 1987 declaring March as National Women's History Month in perpetuity. A special presidential proclamation is now issued every year, which honors the extraordinary achievements of American women. And whereas, American women and girls of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our country in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Mostly unrecorded, right? And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of our country by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, as well as serving our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been political leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage, equal opportunity and rights to choose, but also in the abortionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, the peace movement, and others, creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, the Women's Club of Oceanside was formed on January 4th, 1918. 1918. Joining... Joining the General Federation of Women Clubs in 1920, dedicated to enhancing our local community through the arts, conservation, education, home life, and public affairs, providing scholarships to local high school seniors, nursing students, funding to high school music and art programs, the Oceanside Boys and Girls Club, Oceanside Police and Fire Departments and Personnel, the Women's Resource Center, and countless other charities donating millions of volunteer hours and raising and donating over $8 million. Right, that's women's... And then on behalf of the North County African American Women's Association began in 1995, when the Oceanside Unified School District received a grant from the California Department of Education, Carl Perkins Vocational and Occupational Act Gender Equity Program. A professional group of mentoring women, mostly educators, organized a conference for young girls and single displaced homemakers looking to reenter the workforce. As a result of the conference, the NCAA was born, becoming self-sustaining, raising money for scholarships, empowering young and adult women through educational advancement, health awareness, and improvement in life skills. This year, the North County African American Women's Association will be holding its 27th Annual Gentlemen's Gourmet. And you all know about the Gentlemen's Gourmet, you should. Their largest fundraising event attended by hundreds, including leaders from all fields. And then the final two paragraphs. And whereas, despite these contributions from all women to our country and to Oceanside, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month in the city of Oceanside and ask all residents to join us in celebrating women's history, achievements, and challenges with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Yes? So I'm going to start here and then move that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you Mayor Sanchez and council. Thank you so much for honoring North County African American Women's Association with this wonderful presentation. When I start to think about Women's History Month, it is so important, not only for recognition, but for to acknowledge the history and the work that women have played in developing our country today. And also in equality, the work that we do in equality. So many times we do work in our homes, by our side, quietly, not being acknowledged, but this work is essential for community development and also to bring peace and prosperity to our community. So, just acknowledging all women today and everything that you do, thank you, Mayor Sanchez, thank you.
Thank you Linda. Did you want to introduce your team here and see if anyone wants to speak?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. I'd like to introduce my first vice president Andrea Dixon and then our board member Doris Nyman.
You said it all, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you Mayor Sanchez for this wonderful recognition. Thank you councilmembers, we really appreciate it. The Oceanside Women's Club has been around since 1918. We are 106 years old this past January. And I'm so proud to be a part of this group because it gives women a forum to share their talents and to help people who are well-deserving in our community. Just recently, we had a partnership with Oceanside High School. We, you know, raised funds for the choir, helping them get to their competition in Anaheim. Yes, it was a pancake for a song. And then also, we gave 30 baskets to the First Battalion Reconnaissance in Camp Pendleton, you know, serving the young families who are having newborn babies. And in April, we are going to be having our Dragon House Tea, which you are all invited to. And so what's nice about this club is that these women here, we'll introduce you to, are so passionate. And some of us have been members for a long time, like Doc Henzo, and I'll let her take the microphone. Here you go.
Well, almost as long as I was a teacher, 40 years. So, by golly, I was so glad to hear you're into education. Wow, that means we all do better. And I have the joy of working with a wonderful group. This is our president. And I have the opportunity that when she doesn't feel up to it, I get to do a little presidential work. Well, and I hope that all these other wonderful people will tell you about themselves and what they're doing. Because each one is doing something special for our community and for the Women's Club.
Hi, my name is Isela Sharp and I have been with the Women's Group, the Women's Oceanside. And love it there because we work towards goals. And it's just really nice to help our community. And yeah, so I'm inviting all the women in here to come join us. All right.
I'm Valerie Pibertina, Financial Secretary.
Hi, I'm Carol Boyer and I'm Recording Secretary. And I've been volunteering all of my life. And this is one of the best organizations that I've worked with because we work as a team. We try to get things done as a group and not as an individual taking glory or praise for what we do. So I would really like to invite everybody who wants to be a team member to come and join us.
Thank you. And then, and the North County African American Women's Association meets the 4th Thursday.
Yes, the 4th Thursday at Maricosta Community Learning Center. Also want to put a plug in that if you've seen over at Brooks Theater, this Sunday, we will have a play. It's called Chicken and Biscuits. So, it's a fundraiser for our organization. So it's this Sunday over at Brooks and we invite you.
Thank you, Ann. The, this year's Gentlemen Gourmet will be in September.
Right, that's September, it's going to be September 14th. 14th, and we are excited. So be tuned.
Yes. Thank you very much, so...
A photo.
Yes. Thank you, and please celebrate Women's History Month all month. Thank you. And we actually did not have a closed session, closed session today. So we'll go over to consent calendar items. Again, before I do that, I'm going to announce again that item number 13, item number 13 has been pulled and will be on the agenda again in April. So consent calendar items are items 3 through 10, is there a motion to approve? Okay, poll number eight, any others? Any requests from the public to poll?
We have a request from the public to poll item number nine.
Number nine, okay. Is there a request to approve balance? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number eight is acceptance and appropriation of $500,000 in grant funds from the California Governor's Office of Emergency Services, awarded to the city of Oceanside for the fire department, training center, portable buildings, and authorization by the city manager or designated to execute all related grant documents.
Thank you Mayor. It's a pretty routine item, but it is a large grant. And I just asked the fire chief, there he is, Chief Parsons. I think a lot of folks go to our training center either for open house or the flag retirement ceremonies, things like that. And if you would just briefly talk about what this grant will do for our training center.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Robinson, thank you for the question. The primary purpose is going to be to replace portable buildings which are over 25 years old, but as part of our strategic planning process, we're looking at becoming accredited fire training center. That's actually a really important deal because we can then do our own training, hiring, recruitment locally instead of sending people to Palomar for certification lineups and/or requiring to have Palomar Fire Academy before they come here. So it's actually a big deal, a step in a really big deal process to become accredited, to be able to be a regional fire academy. There's also potential revenue source once we become that.
And so it'll have meeting rooms also or some hub like access maybe through the classrooms or?
Yeah, eventually, yes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you Chief, and I'll move the item.
Okay, I'll second. Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number nine is approval of a continuation of the emergency work to repair a berm and sinkhole resulting from certain rain events at the San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility. And we have Diane Allen, who, no, who's pulled it?
Diane Allen?
Yes, thank you. I'm Diane Allen and I've been a Oceanside resident for over 40 years in District 3. And as one of the many supporters of the Climate Action Plan, I want to congratulate you on the action you took last month to get a coordinator into the budget. This is a good positive move to incorporate the plan the citizens worked hard to get into place in 2019, five years ago. Please consider getting the grant application in for the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022. Between that and the CEA coming up, there will be revenue available to fund the full commission. Don't waste time and lose out on funds available. Addressing the agenda item number nine, I'm all for emergency repairs at the reclamation facility, but I have a few questions. Were there ways to prevent that damage? Are there ways to be more proactive in avoiding infrastructure damages by investing in the drainage projects and water harvesting for water use going forward? These items are included in the Climate Action Plan, page 311, and can be a great cost and resource saver when addressed early, not waiting for more storms and rains to hit. I get it that there's a simple way to ask for state and federal emergency funds handling it your way, but there is no recovery from the papers printing. Heavy showers caused a wastewater treatment plant to overflow, spilling thousands of gallons of sewage onto the beach. I encourage there to be a greater priority by this elected council to think ahead at what can be done and investing in our city instead of continually repairing or patching over and over areas that are going to get hit that are in the storm's main passage. You're also passing the buck to personal property owners insurance by not getting the infrastructure in place ahead of time. Insurance coverage is a big deal right now, as you know. Instead of looking at issues right or left, how about focusing on what is a benefit to the city you're elected to serve? Your citizens are watching as the storms wash away our infrastructure and repairs take over our budget. So I applaud and encourage even more projects as is planned at Buccaneer and Loma Alfa, but at an expanded level to avoid future costs. I want to encourage more activities to be done upstream in fortifying the main drainage areas of the city with trees and root structures that will hold banks and prevent large erosion issues. I've learned a lot being on a homeowners association board, how simple getting drainage and slopes shored up before storm season can cut repairs costs in half. We've planted 30 trees this past year in preparation, and I can tell you there's been an outpouring of gratitude from the owners. This is a huge increase of property value for minimal effort and money invested. All it takes is thinking about driving into a development that has become treeless and barren through the years.
Thank you very much.
Compared to driving into a development filled with a nice variety of trees, the shade, the green, the fresh air, where would you want to buy?
Thank you very much. Okay, so there were two questions there from staff. She asked, are there any ways that we could have prevented the damage? And a related question, could we have been more proactive?
Good evening Mayor, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Councilmembers. As far as preventing or are there ways to prevent the damage? This was a result of the emergency, the heavy rainstorm that occurred early February where the governor declared that as an emergency declaration. And what happened is even though the incident occurred at our San Luis Rey sanitation facility, the damage was at our Windmill Creek. It's an existing berm. The voids that were created as a result of the stormwater runoff was not apparent until after the heavy rain event became, caused substantial erosion and then created some additional voids as well as creating a sinkhole near the Pilgrim Creek at the San Luis Rey facility. We did not do any kind of sanitary sewer spill, but this was a result of the heavy rain event. If we could do regular inspections of those areas, but had it not been for the storm, this would not have occurred. So we're continually updating the city council because this is a repair under the city code's emergency contract. So every, until the work is completed, then we'll notify city council that the work has finished and all of the costs associated with that. And we are near completion, so.
So this has been, these past two years have been a bit unusual in terms of the weather, the rain. So your comment is that, but for this, we would not have discovered?
Exactly, it was a direct result of the rain event.
All right, thank you very much. Did, did anybody else, Mr. Brago, did you want to speak?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I would just add that as council is aware, with respect to the very heavy rain events that we had this past year, surprisingly, we experienced very little damage in comparison to many other communities. And I do say, I do believe that that is because of the advanced preparedness that our staff, in particular, our utilities and public works department, takes in advance of these storm events to make sure that we're prepared in terms of clearing storm drains and doing anything that we can to prevent runoff damage. And I think we actually fared especially well this year.
Right, San Diego, the news from San Diego was especially very bad. In fact, I kept asking you, Mr. Brago, anything happening today? Has any part of our city gotten flooded? The only thing was 78, and that was really on the Carlsbad side. So, but I think that, I want to thank staff for actually responding to calls about potholes. And they have been very responsive in responding to those concerns because that certainly was one of the things that happened were potholes. So thanks to staff for quick response. And I believe there was a motion to approve? Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We're on item number 11 from general items. This is an introduction of an ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the Oceanside City Code to align the city code with changes in laws, regulations, and best practices concerning the operation of regulated mobility devices, including what's commonly called e-bikes within the city limits. We have a report by Justin, is it Petchia?
Pecchia.
Pecchia, okay, thank you. Won't ever happen again, no. Our police lieutenant.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Justin Pecchia. I'm a lieutenant with our Support Operations Division. Up here with me is Sergeant Kababa, who oversees our motor unit as well as our e-bike safety program. We are here to recommend an ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the Oceanside City Code. Currently, as it stands, it only addresses bicycles. I don't think it's any secret, and we all know that e-bikes are here to stay. There's such a large influx of e-bike usage as well as mobility device usage on our streets. They're becoming more accessible, less expensive, and they're often used as an alternate mode of transportation. When we talk about mobility devices, if you look at this slide, the most common ones that were seen on our street are your Class 1 through 3 e-bikes. You have your moped or electric motorcycles. You have your either dual-wheel or single-wheel mobility boards. You have an array of electric motorized scooters. And although wheelchairs and those type of mobility devices are also mobility devices per definition, they are exempt from this ordinance.
Good evening Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. So a little bit about the background. We started taking a look mid-last year, the traffic collisions that were occurring involving mobility devices. City of Oceanside had seen an increase specifically in the electric bike and bicycle aspect of things. In response, the traffic unit went ahead and started pushing out some education for e-bike safety and enforcement and education of our laws and rules of road. In doing so, we've partnered ship with the San Diego Bike Coalition, Sandag, Officer, Office of Traffic Safety, to which we've provided over a dozen bike safety courses to the Unified School Districts here in Oceanside and partnership with those through just the Unified School Districts that have schools in our city. During this time, we've provided that education and allowed them to understand some of the rules of the road for that. A little more on the background, we did take a look at those collisions and we saw again an increase of e-bikes specifically involved during that timeframe that went up almost 36%. So a little bit of analysis that occurred, this ordinance proposing would promote the safety of persons using bicycles and other similar vehicles defined in the ordinance as regulated mobility devices. It not only addresses bicycle safety, but pedestrian safety as well, especially on the sidewalks throughout our cities. The ordinance would offer a locally controlled, education-based enforcement mechanism to where we have an alternative to the monetary court-issued fines that typically would happen with a CVC violation, which is our vehicle violation when it goes to court. In instance, the violator may complete a free-of-charge, police department-provided bicycle and e-safe education course in lieu of the fines.
So in closing, our department recommends the city council introduce this ordinance to amend Chapter 5 of the Oceanside City Code to align and bring up to date the changes in laws, regulations, and best practices concerning the operation of these e-bikes and other regulated mobility devices. And with that, we're open for any questions.
All right, thank you. Could you, could you explain the sidewalks and the use of the sidewalks? Could you, could you explain the sidewalks and the use of the sidewalks, priority still for pedestrians, handicap?
Yes. So currently, as the ordinance stands, the only place that you are not allowed to ride bicycles would be a portion of the strand, the pure plaza, as well as the pier and the areas surrounding that area, along with sidewalks in front of businesses. Now, if you take, if you consider the amount of bicycle rental shops that we have in our city, just the large increase in usage of these mobility devices, we believe that in order to make it safe for not only e-bike riders and bicyclists of, say, very young ages, all the way up to older ages, as well as to pedestrians by defining the usage of bicycles and e-bikes onto sidewalks. Specifically, we are adding a 10-minute, excuse me, 10 miles per hour speed limit for bicyclists or e-bikes on a sidewalk, as well as requiring bicyclists, e-bike riders to dismount their bicycles on sidewalks when in within 50 feet of pedestrian.
Pedestrians, including any any handicap, using wheelchairs and et cetera?
Of course.
All right. Thank you. How many requests do we have to speak from the public?
We have two speakers on the side.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Mitch Silverstein, to be followed by Anna Maria Hallman. We have two podiums, so please make your way up.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Mitch Silverstein, Oceanside resident, South Oceanside, speaking today as just a resident and the secretary and member in good standing of the Oceanside Bike and Pedestrian Committee. First, I want to thank Officer Pecia for being receptive to the comments that I made the first time around. I'm very much in favor of this ordinance and the spirit of it. We definitely need laws and regulations to make sure that everyone's safe, pedestrians, bikers, e-bikers, and so on. And we need clear rules and police do need to be able to enforce bad actors, right? But there was some language in the original draft that, in my opinion, would sort of criminalize when bikers, everyday bikers like me, sometimes we do need to get on the sidewalk. I don't want to ride on the sidewalk. I like to ride in bike lanes, but there's not bike lanes and proper bike infrastructure everywhere in this city. And occasionally, I've had to get on the sidewalk in order to save my own life, in my opinion. So I just felt like the ordinance needed to carve out for that. So again, I'd like to thank Officer Pecia and his team. I thought the language that you adopted is really favorable. Again, it's not about saying we should ride on sidewalks. That's definitely not it. And also, you know, in what we recommended, I looked at all the accident data and statistics to see what's really going on. And basically, the biggest thing, and the ordinance now reflects that, is if any time that someone is riding on the sidewalk, and I guess what would be with legal matter, they need to ride on the same direction as traffic. That is like, that was like one of the highest, the highest rates of bike, bike, biker at fault collisions in that data was people riding in the opposite way of traffic. Because then, when cars are pulling out of driveways and stuff, they're not paying attention. So with that said, basically, I'm just here to, I support it. And then the other recommendation I would have is simply that since the Oceanside Bike and Pedestrian Committee does meet monthly, we've got staff support from Howard LaGrange, who's really, really, you know, just a great person with a lot of knowledge of what works and what doesn't for biking, a lot of league certified biking instructors on that committee, and really people from all over the city who represent the bike and pedestrian community. When OPD or anyone else does suggest policies that affect bikers and pedestrians, I think it would be really nice to run that by that committee first. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, this is not something I was planning on speaking on, but I just, I have some questions, I guess. With regard to, I guess, ticketing, people who are not following the new law, it, I guess, would that, how would that apply to kids on e-bikes, like under, you know, 18, like 16-year-olds and stuff? So that's something I'm wondering. I, I am somebody who really feels like I'm going bonkers, honestly, when e-bikes are on the sidewalk. However, as a mother of children who are going to probably grow up and ride e-bikes themselves, it just doesn't seem fair to potentially criminalize kids that don't have better access to safer streets. And so I'm just wondering how that is going to be enforced? Like, how are the kids going to be not criminalized for riding their e-bike where they have to for safety? Yeah, that's my question.
Good question. And she was the last one, so if you could answer her question, that would be great. And I know that other cities like Carlsbad, for example, actually declared an emergency, state of emergency because of the number of deaths that had happened via the use of e-bikes.
Right. So the first question addresses the juvenile aspect of it. So the whole purpose of this program is to educate the public in a safe manner and provide that safety aspect of it. So we provide essentially a diversions program where they can, in lieu of the fine, they go to a class and learn about bike safety and the proper, you know, equipment and how to maintain their bicycle, along with registering the bicycle. So the whole goal is to educate the individuals and not criminalize it whatsoever. Through the city code, we can do that. They attend a class. Once they attend a completion certificate or email goes out, and basically the violation is dismissed.
Okay, thank you. To council, Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Just a question, will this require any additional signage or anything throughout the city with these? I know down on the strand, there's signs that give direction, but would this cause any additional signage to be needed?
That is going to depend on if, say, for instance, when we have special events coming to town, and we came up with Iron Man, if we wanted for some reason them to be able to ride their bikes on a sidewalk in front of business to get to and from the event, that would require signage allowing that. As far as prohibiting bicycles in those areas, we do not have a plan right now to increase signage, but we will have to promote it through social media and make sure we get the word out that way.
Councilmember Joyce, did, Peter, were you on next? Well, this thing just freaked out, so, yeah, I thought you were.
Move approval staff recommendation.
Okay, now, Councilmember Joyce. It did, it switched around, and I didn't touch it, okay? It's like, okay.
I just want to thank staff for, for being able to go back and forth and recognizing there are ways to make this better when it first came. And I know that that can sometimes be challenging because you have to redo so much work, but thank you for taking the time to get it right. I really appreciate you guys working on it. I do want to express a little bit of frustration in, in the sense that this, the reason, one of the reasons we need this, and we needed to tinker with it so much, is because our road infrastructure is not safe in a lot of areas to bike on. And this circles back to the comments that we heard just a few minutes ago about going after that grant funding. You know, we've been watching it again. There's a really major infrastructure law grant called Safe Streets and Roads for All. It's about $1.2 billion investments in making our streets and roads safe for everyone to use, not just cars. So I really encourage council staff to be looking at that aggressively to find ways that people can get around our city in a safe way on a bicycle or an e-bike, because that's only going to continue to to grow as a use for our city moving forward. And with that, I'm happy to support.
We had a motion. Was there a second? Okay, good. No other lights. My comments, just to make sure that we all agree that sidewalks still the priority is for pedestrians. I do support making our city bicycle friendly, especially with respect to separate bike paths. That's something that I was hoping we would have the plan so that it would be shovel-ready in case there was a grant. There's been a shift in thinking, instead of like having wide roads, for example, have them, you know, actually more narrowed to address like speeding. And why not, when we narrow them, have some kind of separate bike paths along? And some of it is paint, you know, some of it is a little more costly. But if we could have a plan shovel-ready, I would love that. As to what is happening and everybody buying an e-bike, I, I, I know that OPD is on top of this, just would like to hear if there's, there are any changes in terms of your monitoring, if there are increased safety issues, if there are, you know, increased usage of the sidewalk. I had asked a question earlier from the city manager, if there is a bike path and a sidewalk, do you have to use the bike path, which hopefully will be, I mean, the idea being it's, it's actually very safe to use or safe to use? And his response was, it's, it's an option either way. So for me, I think we need to make sure that everybody is safe. So just wanting to make sure that we are advised of any changes in how, how the sidewalks are used, if there's any increased, increase in public safety issues. Thank you. There's a motion and a second, please vote.
I need to introduce, Mayor.
Yes, please.
This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Oceanside amending chapter five of the Oceanside City Code to incorporate changes regarding the operation of mobility devices.
Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you. Item number 12 is receipt and filing of the Sustainable Tourism Master Plan. And we've got a report by our economic development manager, Ms. Michelle Geller.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Visit Oceanside in collaboration with industry and community leaders developed Oceanside's first ever sustainable tourism master plan, which you are getting copies of now. The plan provides a 10-year action plan for stewarding tourism growth towards a sustainable future that benefits the economy, the environment, and the community. And with the help of a 12-person steering committee comprised of key city staff, including myself, and Visit Oceanside's executive board members, the project kicked off in November of 2022 with the hiring of the firm MMGY Next Factor. And Paul Waymet was the project manager for the Oceanside project, and he is here tonight to present the, the plan. He is the founder of the firm, which has been one of the leading consulting firms in the tourism industry. And he's been doing strategic planning and master planning work for over 25 years. And he's done master plans for over 50 destinations, airports, ports, and hotel developments, and now Oceanside. So I will hand it over to Paul.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you tonight this, this master plan. As Michelle just said, we started work on this about a year and a half ago. It was to develop a 10-year sustainable tourism master plan. The mandate from the beginning was really to put a plan together that ensures community well-being, including addressing social, cultural, environmental, economic sustainability. This is not just about visitors, it's really balancing the benefits and the expectations of residents and visitors. Right from the beginning, we had four guiding principles that the team has been considering in, in all of the work. The first is a commitment to sustainable development, obviously. Also, collaboration, making sure that throughout this process that we did talk to, engage with a number of, of industry, community leaders, residents, government. And then also to really look at what could be done to just enhance the quality of life, the experience, the place. This is a beautiful city, there's a lot of unique sort of aspects to it, so not to try to recommend anything to make it something else. But, and then that also applies here to staying true to, to Oceanside. One of the things that we did is, we did look at all of the other plans. There's a number of other plans that were underway or have been completed here in, in Oceanside. So we were mindful of those and wanted to make sure that we didn't make any recommendations which were contrary to, to all of the other work. We were really impressed, our whole project team, we had a pretty large team, impressed with the work that has been done here in the last several years, capital projects that have been announced underway, and also the planning work that's been done. It's been very impressive. You've got a lot of things happening in terms of new experiences, events, lots on connectivity, mobility, environmental sustainability. We love, you know, ReBeach and all of the work that's being done there. And then also, on the stewardship side, work that's being done in terms of workforce, homelessness, you know, visitor education, a lot of things that you're doing are what we would consider best practices right now for destinations around the world. So you're starting in a good place compared to many other destinations. The engagement, we did have one-on-one interviews, we had focus groups in different sectors, town hall meetings, and then three working sessions with the steering committee. The steering committee, as, as Michelle said, was made up of industry, community leaders, as well as city, city officials. I've done over 50 master plans. This master plan had the best engagement I have ever seen in terms of city involvement. We had the opportunity to, to meet with several of the elected officials. I may, I can't remember if it was all, but I know we had great interviews with a number of you. Your staff has been phenomenal to, to work with, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I think a number of steering committee members are here, maybe ask them to stand the ones that are here. So thank you to, to all of them for, for their participation in this, in this work. The, the Oceanside market, you have a, a pretty established, I know you, you deal with this all the time, in terms of visitors, you've got about 5.8 million visits right now that we see from the 2022 numbers. That's creating about 3,500 jobs, over $560 million in spending. This chart shows your top attractions by, by visitors. You've got two attractions, the beaches, obviously, and, and your sports complex that are generating over a million visitors a year. And what's also interesting is when you look at where they're coming from, those top two attractions, your, your beaches and the, the sports complex are generating significant number of those visitors are actually coming from beyond 50 miles. So that's something that we're always looking at in terms of bringing in outside visitors who are going to stay overnight, and much greater spend and economic impact for visitors from further away. When we look at your market, the sort of the tourism infrastructure here, we did look at across a number of elements, conventions, conferences, entertainment, hotel, capacity, sports, shopping, dining, winery, breweries, parks and rec, and attractions and events. We did an assessment compared to a competitive set of where we thought you were strong and, and in some areas shown in, in blue. Green is sort of average, still good, and then weaker areas in red. So this was, and this is going to be, this was critical for us in terms of identifying specific initiatives for, for this plan. When we looked at the specific opportunities, and again, these are in, in some of these major areas, which are the drivers of tourism, we identified several key initiatives, short-term and the We identified several key initiatives, short-term in the next five years, and then medium-term, five to 10, and, and beyond, long-term, 10 to, to 20 years. So a number of specific initiatives, some of these are underway. So it's a matter of just really supporting them, leveraging those, those major developments. These are the four major sort of priorities that we feel for this plan, and I think this supports a lot of your aspirations and, and also the, what we've seen in the other plans is really to continue that work on, on beach replenishment, downtown activation. I think a lot of the opportunity here is you've got some very, you know, great areas. Connectivity is really important. The harbor development, downtown, continued to develop downtown, those are significant opportunities that will benefit visitors as well as, as residents. The destination district, the, the activation of different districts, that's something that is really a priority in many destinations is really creating sort of core areas for different areas, arts, culture, entertainment, outdoor recreation, sports, that will really be successful in, 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 in being attractive for, for visitors. And, and lots of opportunities for agritourism and different types of trails. Convention center, we do think that there's, one of the recommendations is to do a deeper dive into the opportu, into the opportunity of a, of a small conference center meeting venue. That's something that you do not currently have, you've got some great hotels here now. And one of the big benefits of a convention, of a meeting facility, I don't want to get caught up in a big convention center, but a, a meeting facility is meetings typically attract visitors during the week. And I, I know you're, you're, you're very, very busy on, on weekends. So that's a great way to sort of level out the, the flow of, of, of visitors. It's a very effective strategy in, in, in many cities. And then the last area is amateur sports. This is one of the fastest growing segments in, in tourism. During the pandemic, it also was proven to be the most resilient of, of any sector. So again, that's some exciting things there. You've got, you know, the Clippers and all of the announcements in terms of opportunities for, for professional and, and amateur sports. We did do a resident survey, we had over 1,500 respondents to the survey. The, the key items that were, and 40% of those residents were longtime residents, so over 20 years. Most of the respondents did feel that the positive benefits of tourism outweigh the negative. So there was a, a positive sentiment. There was a clear message that the, that the visitors that should be promoted and attracting, attracted to come visit should be ones who share the, the local values of sort of beach preservation and, and sort of cultural preservation. That's something we're seeing in a lot of places. Now, that's a really important part of, of sustainability. And that, you know, the improving the visitor experience should include beach improvements, addressing homelessness, reducing traffic congestion and speed. So this is where we're seeing a brilliant, almost a perfect alignment between what visitors want and what residents want. We would have a much different reality if, if that wasn't the case. And then the last one is, we did ask, what are the specific issues that should be addressed to mitigate the impacts of tourism? And that included some of the top of mind responses, ensuring quality drinking water, respectful visitor behaviors, waste management, and environmental preservation. Okay? The other survey that we did, this was, we had about 122 respondents, this was industry, community, government leaders, a destination next assessment. This was a, this is a model I created 10 years ago. And it's been, we've done now over 375 destinations around the world. It looks at 12 variables defining destination strength, 12 variables defining alignment between industry, government, and community. You are in the Trailblazer quadrant, that's, you, you're outperforming other destinations. You have above-average scores for both destination strength and community alignment. So as we told the steering committee, as we presented some of the other meetings, this was a, a very good score. You should be very proud of that score in terms of where you are today. We also had the Travel Foundation, this is one of the leading environmental sustainability experts in our industry, they do work around the world, they're, they're part of, they were involved in the, creating the, the GSTC standards. They did an assessment, identified some areas to, to focus on. This was a pretty in-depth assessment, looking at about 52 different practices. And they, they interviewed and did a, a deep dive in, in this area. So lots of work was done there, and that's included in the recommendations as well. Where we got to in terms of a vision for the destination, looking out 10 years, it's really, what we were struck by is to promoting vibrancy, increased vibrancy, but also with that authenticity that you have here. This is, you know, a different community, unique, and really to, to celebrate that. So vibrancy meets authenticity in Southern California's most creative coastal destination. To achieve that, four critical goals to, to really focus on. The first one is elevating and cultivating events and experiences. The secondary is on enhancing connectivity and mobility. The third is supporting environmental sustainability. And finally, champion community stewardship. And for each of these goals, there's, we've got 10 initiatives in each. And I won't get into, I won't go into these here, but they're all included in the, in the plan. There's some pretty comprehensive list of specific initiatives that we believe should be included in this, in this plan. There's, there's a lot of opportunities, you're doing a lot of these things already. So again, congratulations on the work. So the plan lays out the specific initiatives in each area. Just the, the, the final item here. It really has been a pleasure working with Visit Oceanside with Leslie and her team. This is not a Visit Oceanside plan, this is really a, a community-wide plan. The reason why we have a steering committee with so much city involvement is everyone has to work together to, to implement it. And there's different roles that different organizations, the city, others would play in sort of fostering and developing these initiatives. So that's a, a really critical piece. And just the, the closing comment here in terms of the next steps. We have laid out an initial three-year implementation plan on some recommendations in terms of who could lead some of these initiatives and what should be the priority initiatives. The recommendation is to keep the steering committee together to manage the, the development and, and sort of implementation of it. So that, that concludes my report, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We have two speakers on this. Let's go ahead and get them, get them up.
Our first speaker is Erin Warren, to be followed by David O.
Erin?
Hello, good evening, my name is Erin Warren, I live at 1241 Shambor Port, Oceanside, California. Also, my family grows avocados in Southmore Hills. That is a great report, I'm so glad to see agritourism in this, in the master plan because we worked, our community worked so hard to get the wineries and the vineyard, the wineries, the, the wedding venues, the meeting places and things like that. I was very, I was, I was glad because that's what I wanted to speak upon. So thank you, thank you guys for doing that, you guys did a wonderful job. And I'm sure Kim, George, and, and everybody out there is really pleased to see this happen. So thank you.
Thank you. David O.
Evening, council, hello. David O., resident of Oceanside, born and bred here. A few concerns that I had in, or I guess not concerns, but things to point out, I would want to say, in the development process of the presentation, it did say that the steering committee was made up of 26 individual or community members. But looking at the list of steering committee members, board of directors and board of liaise, or board liaisons, there weren't really any sort of community leaders that I recognize on, on there. As someone who has been homegrown here, who has been involved in the community, both, both nonprofit and political advocacy-wise. So I do want to just kind of throw that out there as a concern, so that is something that is there. And so I do have kind of three questions, I don't know if they are answered, but I do want to put them out there. Hearing the concerns, is there a potential to shift the steering committee or expand the, the steering committee to include some of these leaders? My big concern with the convention, and convention or conference spaces is that there are no nonprofit organizations that are currently doing the work to have any sort of like say in this. And so that would be a kind of like big relief in terms of space, in terms of providing that. I look to San Marcos with the One Safe Place, nonprofit organization, that does have a big convention space that they do lend out to various organizations to pull trainings or bring together the North County, or North County and North Inland, or not coastal, North Inland folks together. So that would be kind of something that we can bring to Oceanside as well and kind of expand on that. So I do want to kind of put that out there as, when looking at the conference and convention space, that could, we, we would need kind of input from our nonprofit locations. And then also, so yeah, and so how, the question I have written is to increase the non, non-industry community leaders as well. So kind of going back to that first point of making sure that we are kind of incorporating some sort of the agricultural tourism in Southmore Hills, as well as the cultural tourism that happens with Oceanside. There's a lot of, it's not just the beach, there is a lot that happens in Oceanside and, and kind of giving it space and honoring that. So that it is not just necessarily centered around the city of Oceanside and the involvement of those that are already doing that, but also Oceanside itself as a city and the community members and the people who have created the culture that is Oceanside that we are all, I, I am all very proud of. So yeah, that, that's kind of my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I was watching Leslie writing down, running some things, did you want to respond to that, Leslie?
Honorable Mayor, city council members, I'll respond to that. Thank you, first of all, for both of your inputs, we really appreciate that. This is a journey, and it is going to take continuous input as we move forward throughout the years. The steering committee, committee was made up of my board and city staff members. However, we were really diligent about the engagement process and making sure that we did engage with community leaders through the focus groups, we did have a lot of people in from the Arts and Cultural Committee. We had restaurant focus group, we had outdoor recreation focus group. We really tried to highlight the different pillars of the community within those focus groups. In addition, we interviewed different community leaders. Mel Vernon was interviewed, Max Disposi was interviewed in part of those community leader interviews that we had. So we tried to be as comprehensive with the budget and time that we have, that we had. And we want to continue that engagement as we move forward. And then thanks for the thoughts on the, on the conference facility. We're always looking at ways that we can do things in the short term as we look long term.
Right, like for example, at the transit center, it would be great to have a convention center there, right?
Yeah, right, right there at the train, get off, have access to the hotels, would be, would be.
Thank you, thank you. So that was two to the council, council member Robinson.
Thank you. Erin actually spoke to one thing that I was going to talk about was for remembering and including agritourism out in District Two. And, and I know there's a couple footnotes in there, or sections in there talks about ocean camp development and agritourism pharmacy, and I think that's very important. Don't forget us out in District Two, we got a lot to offer out there in the future. And the other thing, just, and I don't, I don't know if I even said this in my interviews or when I did my survey, but one of the things that I think we need to remember is we do have our general aviation airport. And talking from, you know, it's not huge, but it's underutilized, I think, and to make sure that we market to that particular issue of visitors who might fly in for a day, spend a night, go down to the harbor, whatever. So don't forget, don't forget our, our flyers out there. I know, okay. Thanks.
So agritourism was something that we started back in, what was it, like 2011 or 12? And so, yeah, my heart's still very much, and brought that back from being on the Coastal Commission and seeing how some farms are actually in the coastal zone. And so how do we make them sustainable? And definitely agritourism was something that's, was a buzz back then, still huge here now. But thank you, council member Joyce.
Just my second chance to do another plug for, first of all, thanks for the very comprehensive work, it is very exciting. I love that it comes back and we have no idea what's going to be in the final pitch. And then strategic goal number two is to enhance connectivity and mobility. It's like the theme of the night, I don't know what our next one's going to be, but I'm sure it'll have something to do with it. Making our streets safer for people to get around, both visitors and the people that live here is essential, it should be a top priority, thanks.
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to say is, there was an article in the UTO about maybe three, four weeks ago that talked about San Diego being the really heart of art and murals. And I want to see that Oceanside has really just captured that. You know, starting off, being recognized through the cultural district, but really, really taking off. You've, you've got artists, street artists, really just wanting to show their talent on, in their, in their neighborhoods. And so this is happening in the east side and very, very excited about it. Working with the business community, as well as residents and saying, hey, is it okay if I use this wall? And, and agreeing to what it will look like, and it's, it's all just been very wonderful, to the point where they're saying, you are going to be better than Chicano Park. Chicano Park is actually a cultural district on its own. So I mean, just to be hearing young folks, just young, and then just really having these dreams of really expanding Oceanside and, and showing the world the talent here. So there's a motion? Okay, okay, there's a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you, it is five after six, and it is time for our public hearing items. We do have two. First one is adoption, is item number 14, which is adoption of a resolution to amend the fire department junior lifeguard program fees effective April 1st, 2024. And this is not an April Fools', you know, presentation. Right?
It's not April Fools', we're not fooling you. Good evening.
Staff only.
Honorable Mayor, council members, Lola Swank here to.
My, my apologies, I am going to go ahead and open up this public hearing, request disclosures from our, from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff only.
Staff.
No contact.
Staff and residents.
Staff.
Do we have any correspondence and our petitions, Mr. DeMar?
We have not had any correspondence or petition on this item.
Thank you, so we are actually going to have testimony with our beach lifeguard captain, Bill Curtis, and Lola Swank. So. Let's begin.
Unruh Mayor, council members, Bill Curtis, lifeguard captain, city of Oceanside Fire Department. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Lola Swank. I'm going to ask that she do the proclamation and the request, just to give her a little bit of time at the podium. And any questions you want to throw at me, send it to her first, please.
Okay, so this is, this is the non-April for, April Fools'. Okay. So this is, this is the non-April for, April Fools', um, part, right? Now, go ahead.
Right. Uh, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to amend the fire department lifeguard division program fees effective April 1st, 2024. We want that up. A little bit about the background. The Oceanside Junior Lifeguard Program is a summer youth beach safety program, beach, beach and ocean safety for children nine to 17 years old, and teaches beach and ocean safety. We have more than 800 junior guards in our program, and the program has sold out in less than two days in the last three years.
Wow.
All right. Our current proposed fees, our current fees for city residents is $330. We have a current of 528 city residents, city children in that program. We're proposing it to go to 400 with a proposed of 554 participants in the program. So if you have a second child in the family, it was 330, goes down to 310 for the second child in the family. We give it cost savings. And for non-residents, it was 350 last year. For a second child, it was 330. We're proposing a $400 for a city resident and out of non-resident would be 420. We, um, have a city Oceanside Youth Scholarship Program is open to Oceanside residents. Scholarships are granted on applicants who would otherwise not be able to participate in the program. The department awards scholarships based on the total annual income and persons living in a residence, and families are granted one scholarship per year. So one child is 150, two children, 200. And you can see it goes up to four, 300. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution to amend the fire department junior lifeguard program fees effective April 1st, 2024.
Thank you. And if you have any questions, we're here to respond.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Um, do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We don't have any advance written requests to speak on this item.
This is a public hearing. Uh, you do not have to have signed up to speak on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, please approach the podium. Um, one of the, one of, um, one of the two, you, if you could, um, identify yourself and then, um, speak, you can speak for up to three minutes on this, on this very specific item, having to do with, um, the, uh, fees for the junior lifeguard program. I see no one. Jeez, you know, I almost did it. I almost...
Nice try there, yes. Thanks so much for that presentation. Um, you know, I wasn't planning to speak on this, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things.
And this is Mitch Silverstein.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Mitch Silverstein. Um, I'm the policy manager for Surf Rider Foundation, but I'm just speaking as a resident.
As a resident, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I didn't, well, the question that was stirring around in my head is, is were there scholarships to ensure that there's like, that people who can't afford it can do this? And I saw that there is. So I'm really stoked to see that. I think that's great. I have a question. Um, just basically like, do we, does the, does, do the lifeguards kind of keep, is there any demographic information about which kids from what communities and what neighborhoods in Oceanside are doing the JL program? Um, you know, I'm just thinking like, I've heard nothing but great things about junior lifeguards from every city that does it ever since moving to San Diego County. It's like so beloved by every community because it's so awesome, right? You're like changing kids' lives. I didn't grow up like close enough to the beach to even like know this existed. Um, but as someone who loves the ocean and loves the beach and has just dedicated my life at this point to, to serving the, the ocean and our waves and our beaches, I'd love to see like, or, or just know some, some, just basically like have that, those answers to that question of like, are youth from underserved communities in Oceanside a part of this program? And if so, how much so? And if not, how can we do better to get them down to the beach? Because I think we can all agree as Oceanside, as a city loves a beach, like being exposed to the beach at an early age can really just change your life. Um, I was exposed at a later age and it changed my life. So that's my question and fully supportive of, um, the JL program. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh, any other requests to speak from the public? I see no one rising. So I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and ask, um, staff to respond to those questions.
All right. I'll be happy to answer those. We had over 64% of Oceanside residents in our program last summer, 66 the summer before. We have families from all over the city of Oceanside and Vista, San Marcos and Fallbrook, and they're all from, all over the communities. Um, one thing that is tricky, they do have to pass a swim test. So there's, which is, uh, can be hardship for some families in some neighborhoods, but it's amazing to see the families that do come out and can pass that swim test. The Oceanside Parks and Rec have a great swim program to get kids ready for our swim tests, and it is a very passable test compared to other junior guard programs in the state of California.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great response. All right. Um, to the council, uh, Deputy Mayor Keim.
Just want, just a couple of quick questions. And first I want to reiterate, um, the praise for the program. My daughter's part of it. It's, um, we, we have, we're known, um, through San Diego County for probably the best junior lifeguard program. A lot of that's your, your hard work. So thank you. Um, I, looking at the fees, I would be, um, because I know a lot of, um, kids from cities south of us who have their own junior lifeguard programs still come to ours. Has there ever been a thought of even making, um, dropping our resident fee a little bit and then upping, um, um, non-residents at all? I mean, given, uh, a, a city to the south of us that remain nameless, I mean, they have a program as well, but I want to, I really want to make sure that, that our residents, um, have the ability first. And also on top of that, um, have we ever thought of a, um, a priority enrollment? Because I know it's tough to enroll and people, it's, it's a really quick window that it fills up. Is there time? Maybe we could have gave our residents a few days only for Oceanside residents and open up to non-residents just to make sure that we really get to take advantage of the program?
That is something that we can definitely look at for this next year. We have three weeks till April 1st for our registration. It's pretty tricky right now. Um...
And, and that was, I just, that, next, I understand how late this is, and I didn't discuss with staff ahead of time, so I apologize for that.
No, no. Um, and as far as upping and lowering prices, we are, um, you think about Fallbrook and San Marcos and Vista, and a lot of our, our lifeguard staff is from, not just from Oceanside, and they've all been junior guards and they've all been assistants that have gone through our program, and that's how we safeguard our beach. So we can definitely look at the prices for next, next year as well. Sure.
But...
Thank you. And maybe just getting the information out a little more ahead, because you, you mentioned that, um, the spots fill up like in less than two days.
Right. We do, I, I've spent on the website, um, since November, our dates, and I do make, we do make posts on Instagram and send out letters to past participants and families to, as well as what people know is happening.
Fantastic.
And receiving lots of emails currently.
Yes, I have heard that our, our program is the best.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Joyce?
Thank you. I won't heap any more praise on it because I just can't wait till my kids can get into it and are old enough to do it. So, um...
I can't wait to watch you watch them.
So, um, I would also like to include that recommendation in our, um, motion tonight that we look at next year prioritizing local and, um, maybe making the fees similarly prioritized. The other recommendation I'd have is, uh, we have these community centers in, uh, neighborhoods that we recognize where youth have, uh, need access to that kind of resource already. I would really like to see a partnership with the housing department where the students who are attending those after-school programs spend the next year getting ready for the test, and then they, um, could possibly even get scholarships through Measure X funding to get into those programs so that we really not just like invite them, but really make it a reasonable pathway for folks who are, are kids who wouldn't have this access and otherwise get into it. So if, I would really love that to be part of our recommendation for this, for this coming year and then for next year as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sounds great. Yeah. All right. So, um, there's no other requests to speak. So, um, and there was a motion?
I make, yeah.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 15, which is our second, uh, public hearing item, is as the CDC, adoption of a resolution approving a development plan and density bonus, uh, for the revision of an approved mixed-use project to convert floors that were reserved for hotel rooms, um, to be converted into 64 apartment units in conjunction with the construction of an eight-story mixed-use building resulting in 179 apartment units, including 18 units, which is 10% reserved for low-income households, and 1,581 square feet of ground floor commercial space on a 15,589 square foot parcel at 712 Seagate Drive. This is next to the reptile, reptile business. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures, uh, from commissioners and, uh, regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff, and we went through this not that long ago.
Staff and public.
Staff and public, and yeah, it wasn't that long ago.
Staff public.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll ask, uh, Councilmember Joyce when he gets back, um, to do disclosures. Um, uh, Mr. Secretary, are there any correspondence and our petitions?
Uh, we've only received one correspondence in opposition from Lane Stewart, which was forwarded to the council prior to the meeting.
Thank you very much. We're going to get, begin, uh, testimony with Rob, Mr. Rob D., principal planner.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Rob D. Mahowski with, uh, Planning Division and here to present a revision to the 712 Seagate Mixed Use Project. The request is, uh, for approval of a development plan and density bonus of a, for revision of an approved mixed-use development to convert two floors for, for, uh, that were reserved for hotel rooms into 64 apartment units for a total of 179 units with 10% or 18 of those units reserved for low-income households and ground floor commercial. The 15,589 square foot site is a vacant lot located at the corner of Seagate and Nevada. The site has a downtown zoning designation of sub-District Two, which is intended for a commercial office and also allows mixed use. Located less than a quarter of a mile from the Oceanside Transit Center, the site is considered a transit-oriented development. The original project was approved by the Community Development Commission on January 26, 2022 for an eight-story mixed-use building with 115 studio apartments with 10% of those reserved as affordable and 64 hotel rooms. The applicant applied for grading and building permits in, in 2022, and due to economic environment in 2023, the applicant has indicated there's, there have been challenges to financing a hotel in, in combination with this mixed-use project and expressed interest to pursue additional housing units. An application for an SB 330 preliminary application was submitted in August of 2023, and a formal application for the revised project was submitted in November of 2023. The application consists of two components, a development plan to convert the two floors of hotel room into 64 studio apartments, 1,581 square feet of commercial flex space on the corner, and other, other than in interior remodels, the overall building design and footprint will, will remain the same. And as part of this request, the applicant is proposing to reserve the 10% affordable units under density bonus and the same incentive concession waivers that were previously granted. And for this request, a conditional use permit is no longer required because the hotel component is removed. The project consists of an eight-story building with 179 apartment units, a residential amenity area, 149 parking spaces, and seven on-street parking spaces. On Seagate, there's also a loading zone on Nevada and parkway landscaping along both frontages. Access to the parking for the site would be provided from an east-west alley between Ditmar and Nevada. And for comparison purposes, the revised project adds 64 apartment units and, which are six additional affordable units for a total of 18. And with the removal of the hotel component, there is less required parking. The project would comply with the minimum parking requirements as a TOD project that also qualifies for a 25% reduction. And combined with the density bonus ratios, the project is required to provide a minimum of 132, but for, but provides 149 spaces with 142 of those in the parking structure. As previously noted, the project's architectural design would remain unchanged, and the eight-story building would consist of three levels of subterranean parking and above-grade parking on the first and second level. The first floor would include commercial space, a residential lobby and leasing area, as well as bike lockers parking. Floors three through eight would include the, the 179 apartment units and a third-floor amenity area, including a pool, gym, and outdoor open space and cooking barbecue area would be provided. By reserving 10% of the units for affordable, density bonus law entitles the applicant to one incentive and concession and unlimited waivers of development standards. As previously granted with the approved project, the applicant is requesting an incentive concession for the undergrounding of utilities and eight waivers from or reductions of development standards. Staff finds that the revised project conforms with various policies of the general plan in that it is consistent with the pattern of downtown redevelopment with mixed-use housing to support downtown businesses. The project is a transit-oriented development in proximity to the Oceanside Transit Center, which would encourage residents to support and use public transit in the area. And the addition of 179 studio apartments would help the city meet its housing needs obligation under the RENA. And furthermore, the project complies with the development standards of the downtown zoning district except as waived under density bonus law. On January 24th, the Downtown Advisory Committee considered the project recommended by a 5-2 vote to approve the project as requested. There was concerns noted regarding traffic conflicts in the area and potential parking impacts of the project. Staff recommends that the Community Development Commission adopt a resolution approving a development plan and density bonus for the revision of an approved mixed-use project to convert floors reserved for hotel rooms into 64 apartment units in conjunction with an eight-story mixed-use building resulting in 179 apartment units, including 18 units reserved for low-income households, 1,581 square feet of ground floor, floor commercial on a 1,589 square foot parcel at 712 Seagate Drive. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
We don't have any advance written requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. Um, this is a public hearing. If you wish to address this issue very specifically, you, um, can do so. Um, please, uh, approach the podium, um, identify yours, yourself via your name, and then you have up to three minutes to speak on this.
Hi, um, I'm Bonnie M. from Oceanside.
My apologies. Let's, let's hear from the developer. My apologies. We haven't done one in a bit. He gets up to 20 minutes, so, gee.
Just for the record, my disclosure is staff only.
Thank you. But thank you for letting me know that at least we, three people are interested in speaking on this. Thank you. Yes?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and, uh, councilmembers. My name is Kelly Canister with the Lightfoot Planning Group, presenting revisions to the approved 712 Seagate Drive project. As Rob mentioned, this project was approved by this body in 2022. Economic changes over the last couple of years have created a shift in the... changes over the last couple of years have created a shift in the hotel market, making financing the hotel portion of this project challenging. So the applicant is pursuing providing additional housing in place of the hotel. This summary of the revisions that Rob covered, the area allocated to the hotel would be converted to residences, but the project maintains a provision to reserve ten percent of the total number of units for low-income residents. So the number of affordable units increases to eighteen. The hotel lobby becomes a neighborhood serving space for a cafe or small business, and parking for the residents in excess of the required number is provided in the garage. There are some minor finish changes that kind of would normally be handled with substantial conformity, but there are no changes to the approved building. These are some of the details again that Rob's already covered. Again, there are one hundred and seventy-nine workforce housing apartments, eighteen of which would be reserved for low income. And then to review the ground-floor plan briefly, the yellow area on the right along Seagate includes the residential lobby and the commercial space, all behind storefront glass to open that up to the public sidewalk. The yellow areas in the garage includes some backhouse for the commercial and secure bike storage for the residents, making alternative transit feasible on this site less than half-mile to the transit center. The green or darker areas in the garage are some mechanical and the trash room, and that along with the garage entry are accessed from the alley in compliance with the Oceanside zoning. And again, there's one level of parking above this and three below. And the third floor shows that the project is still providing ample amenity space for the residents, both indoor with a gym, some gathering areas, co-work space, and outdoor in a west-facing pool deck. There are no minor, major changes to the approved site plan. The parkways are still improved with new ground cover, some new shade trees to complement the existing palm trees that'll remain. The street crossing improvements that were put in by the city won't be impacted by this. And the parallel spaces along Seagate are still converted to angled spaces, increasing the number of street spaces available to the public. One finish change is the addition of a green wall that surrounds the second-floor parking, replacing those decorative louvers from the approved project and increasing the amount of greenery seen from the public areas. Other than the replacement of those louvers, the variety of finishes is the same. This ground-level angle better demonstrates the kind of view that pedestrians would see with that green wall and the modern architecture consistent with the approved project. With this amended use, we did revisit the community outreach program. We held a new in-person meeting to go over these changes with three people that showed up. They appeared to be supportive of this amended use. We think this project complements downtown, and we ask for your approval tonight. Thank you, and we're available for questions.
Thank you very much. You have sixteen minutes, thirty-two seconds left for, well, I guess, not rebuttal. Yeah. All right. If you wish to, to speak on this item, please rise, approach the podium, state your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Thank you very much for the false start there.
Hi, I'm Bonnie May. I'm an Oceanside resident. I did not plan to speak on this, but I'm concerned about the very, very low percentage of low-income housing that has been dedicated for this project because it doesn't reflect the city and our demographics. The United States government maintains a screening tool called the Climate and Economic Justice Screening Tool, and it shows federally designated disadvantaged communities across the United States, and most of Oceanside is a disadvantaged community. And the adjacent census tracts to this project, Oceanside ranks in the ninety-eighth percentile for housing costs, which means that ninety-eight percent of households make less than eighty percent of the area median family income and are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And ninety-two percent of those parts of Oceanside are designated as low-income, which means that people in those households earn equal or twice the federal poverty level. And so I guess I'm just curious why only ten percent of that development is dedicated to low-income families when that is not going to benefit a majority of Oceanside.
Thank you. Mr. Not.
Yes, Mayor, council members, Jimmy Not, one-twenty-seven, Sherry Lane. Question I had, I didn't see any portrayal or adjustment in the portrayals of solar or electric charging stations. The number-one issue that is into a lot of the major cities around the nation is availability of electric charging stations, and that is with developments and also in public streets. That needs to be revisited, especially with this current state goals that the, our city is part of that through Sandec. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the same vein as Bonnie's, I just want to-
State your name.
My name is Macy. I would just like to ask the question of where that ten percent figure came from. I was there at one of the city council meetings when the number was reduced from fifteen percent to ten percent. Was, is this part of the same thing? Was that, I'm just wondering how you guys figure out numbers for that because eighteen units is kind of a joke, is it not? Kind of a slap in our faces. There's no affordable housing for us. For people my age, we have to have roommates forever, live with our parents forever. We move out of here. It's a joke. Eighteen units is a joke, and if you guys were responsible for that, it's pretty shameful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Maria, yeah, Anna Maria. I, I'm confused because I thought that the affordable housing had to be fifteen percent now. It's still, you know, not much, but yeah, so I'm wondering when, why ten percent as well. So that's it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council, Linda Walshaw. I wonder if anybody saw the Fox Five News article yesterday about Oceanside being one of the bottom two cities in the nation for overpaying for rent and, and, and the entire country. That, that's actually a thing. I mean, the average rents here right now in the study that we just completed were thirty-three fifty a month, and yet all of our seniors are on fixed incomes. The average social security check is seventeen thirty-four a month nationally. So the largest percentage of newly homeless people in San Diego County are seniors and veterans, are people that live on fixed incomes, the disabled, the blind, a lot of people. So since we reduced our, or increased our low-income definition to be a hundred thousand dollars a year for low income, a lot of our young people, a lot of our people that work in local retail and, and other jobs, they're not making that kind of money. And they've been priced out of housing in adjacent counties as well. So I think we need to maybe revisit some of this and take a look at how we can improve our housing situation because if we lose even one of our other low-income units, like like another mobile home park closes or something like that, we're in trouble. We don't have any place to relocate people. So I'd appreciate it if you guys would consider maybe looking at that again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just, just want to clarify here that this is not a city project. This is a private project under the state density bonus law. So this is calculated under the state density bonus law, but staff will address that. Anyone else wishing to address this project? Ms. Marin?
Hi. Quick question. I thought we were with Planning Commission, I thought that mixed use was not a good idea anymore?
You can, you can address it to the council-
Oh, sorry.
Then staff will respond.
I'm like, I thought mixed use wasn't a good idea anymore because we still have vacant areas where we have mixed use and we have no storefronts. It's all like, oh, no?
Well, you'll, staff will respond to you.
Oh, okay. Well, thanks.
You might be getting something mixed up.
Maybe I am.
Yeah. All right. Anyone else requesting to address this specific project? All right. I think I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and ask staff to address the questions. One of them had to do with solar and/or electric, electric charging stations, and another question had to do with why ten percent, why not fifteen percent? I think it's an old timing issue maybe, and why not more affordable units, I guess?
Mayor, I think the, just to remind you, I think the applicant has rebuttal time available.
Ah, rebuttal, yes. The developer, would you like to have some rebuttal time?
Mayor, just briefly. Regarding the affordable housing, this applicant is applying for a grant to be able to provide one hundred percent affordable.
On-site?
The project in front of you is for the ten percent, consistent with the, what was permitted when they applied for the SB three-third, but they are trying to provide that for the city. The charging stations will be provided in accordance with the building code or the zoning code.
Right, you just said that, just to clarify, because I'm having a hard time hearing. Maybe it's because you weren't speaking into the, a mic, but that they will be, the ten percent will be built onsite.
Yes.
And you're, and the developer is looking for a grant?
Yes, they are going to give you at least ten percent, eighteen units within this project.
Right.
If they are granted this special funding, then they will make it a hundred percent affordable.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Now, staff.
Mayor Sanchez, members of the city council. So the project is proposing ten percent set aside for affordable units. Under state density bonus law, that's the minimum required to qualify for the ver, for the low-income category. In addition, the applicant filed an application under the housing cri, the provisions of the Housing Crisis Act, otherwise known as SB three-thirty. Under that provision, it locks in requirements, fees, among other, among other tools to the developer. At the fees at the time the application is submitted, the council didn't adopt a inclusionary housing ordinance that required fifteen percent until earlier this year. So this SB three-thirty application was submitted in August of last year. Therefore, it's subject to the ten percent inclusionary housing requirement. And to further expand on the applicant's provision, the project is conditioned to meet the city's renewable energy requirements under condition number one-seventeen, and EV charging stations will be provided as required by the Green Building Code. I think that answers all the questions. If there's any others, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. No one else from staff? Okay. So to the, to the council, Council Member Robinson.
Get to be first tonight all the time. It's great. For the developers' representative, probably, or well, staff, probably, that's just, the seven, or the parking spaces exterior to the building, they're listed in as parking spaces, but they're not, they're public parking spaces, correct?
That's accurate. Councilmember Robinson, under the mixed-use provisions of the downtown zoning ordinance, projects, certain types of projects can count on-street parking spaces as parking for the project. This project qualifies for that. That's why they've included that in the overall parking count.
Yeah, because we did get some communication concerns about parking, fewer parking spaces than the number of units and that kind of stuff. So I was just curious on that. The other question I have, and again, this may be to the developers' representative, the, the question about changing from hotel, sixty-four hotel units to sixty-four studio apartments, and it was a financing issue or a, a, I'm just trying to understand that a little bit, you know, and you can dumb it down for me, but what, what's the big difference in, in there? Where, where's the real issue? Because I think hotel units would be beneficial as well to have. I'm just trying to get a grip on what, what the real issue is because it's the same building. Like I said, you can do chubby crayons for me and then I'll hit it.
Councilmember Robinson, I won't be able to explain it because it's beyond me as well, the financing, but the financing for the hotel portion is different than the financing for the apartments. And they're, they're having problems with the, the financing for that hotel, even though it, it seems a little weird because it's all the same building. It is different.
That's all I need. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Joyce?
Just had a couple of questions. What would have, what would have triggered this project to get re, re-approved from start? So I know there's, this is like a significant change to the project. So how come this can still fall under their original SB three-thirty?
Councilmember Joyce, so to answer your question, this doesn't follow the, the original SB three-thirty. This is a subsequent application. This is a subsequent project that you're, that's being considered tonight. So it's a revision of an approved project. So in August of last year, August of twenty-twenty-three, the applicant filed an SB three-thirty application to, in effect, lock and place the allowable density provisions and fees, among other things.
Okay. And then I just want to bring up something that maybe we could look at as a council. I didn't get notice of the community meeting that this was happening, even though it's in my district, and I would just love to have a heads-up when we have significant projects coming forward within our districts. It, it seems like something that we should be aware of at all times. So if there's some way that staff can automate that, I don't know if that's a question, but maybe we can come back to it.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and council members, I have actually discussed that with our Development Services Director, and we are changing our protocols to ensure council notification of these meetings when the public noticing goes out for them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There would have been four people at your meeting. So just to clarify what this looks like, I did some back-of-the-envelope math, and I, I do also share the frustration because of, we're calling it low income, but that, you know, when you look at the, the county's AMI index, that low income actually comes out to, I'm, I'm assuming this is a one individual occupying these studio apartments. That's, from what I see, seventy-seven thousand two hundred dollars is, is considered low income for a single individual. That, that would be the folks that would qualify for the low-income units. So they are, it's the max, I think I heard up here. And then they would be paying, if the, if that individual was occupying, they'd be able to be charged one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars for the studios. So I just think it's important to speak out about what this like means on paper and what it means in real life. That is why we push for an inclusion of more affordable units because that affordable term really means something. I would love to see that, this seems like a, barring the fact that I think it's way too tall, but beyond that, we do need studio apartments, too. That needs to be part of our overall housing inventory. I would love to see this kind of project be a fifty-fifty project, at least. A fifty-fifty makes sense to me. It's integrated housing. It has people from different opportunity levels all in the same space and access points. So if, if we have the ability to do that, to partner with developers to do stuff that looks like a fifty-fifty project, I would like to see us do so. I don't have any other questions, though.
Thank you. No other, no other lights. You know, this is one hundred and seventy-nine now with a hundred and forty-two garage spaces provided, and then seven on-street spaces. The seven on-street are probably more for the commercial side. So that's not quite exactly one per unit. And while I understand the state wanting, you know, allowing or requiring the city to not, not base its acceptance on, on the, the number of parking spaces and actually being able to waive space, space requirements. It just doesn't make sense in North County because we're still very car centric. We don't have the best public transportation. I guess we're, we're all talking about e-bikes, so maybe that's the, that's the idea, is that everyone's going to be using e-bikes to get, you know, to work and other places, I don't know. But we're in a transition. I do hope that we continue to move forward on public transportation. They're talk, they're, you know, now we're not talking about busing as much as micro-transportation, like what we have, the O side? Go side, go side, I was thinking, what, where's that other initial? The go side. We do need to be able to figure this out, because we, we need to be able to have our residents be able to get to work and get to where other, other places that they need to get to. Grocery stores, doctor's appointments, the whole thing. And we're in this transition. We're car, still very car centric. Six, like 60% of our workforce travels outside of the city for work. So that's still not changed over this time. Deputy Merrickheim.
Echo some of those comments. So we, we added six, this, this project, just want to confirm, we added 64 units, correct, from the previous version? Correct. Okay, and then, but we took away four parking spots. So now we have 37 units with no parking spots. It's just now, it's going to be a city problem, because we're going to have to figure out when they park up and down the streets in downtown. So this is what happens when the state density bonus law grants these waivers. And not putting staff on the spot, but we have parking requirements, development standards that we apply. And when the state overrides those, we get this. So, I mean, many of these are going to have two vehicles per unit. And now we've got 37 spots with units with, with no spaces. And the, and these are the kind of consequences that the state density bonus law creates for cities. And it's project after project after project, and it's very disappointing, to put it mildly.
Right, so I know, and no one really wants to make the motion, because I see no lights and no one has said it. But there, there is no basis for denial, unfortunately. There is no discretionary use now, because it's not a the, the hotel part is gone. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval. I can't
Second.
Think of a legal basis for denial. Not happy about it, not happy at all. If this was, if we had, I mean, it looks better, I think. I'm trying to remember the last time, maybe the green makes it look better. I mean, we deserve good-looking projects that are going to be responsive to the, our, our community needs. And we're in this space where the developer community just controls Sacramento. And I've just never thought I'd see the day. I, I don't really consider Oceanside as one that that is, works really hard to stop projects like, say, some of our other coastal cities in north, north coastal. I think we're very urban. We accept that we need to have workforce housing, that's not this. That we need to have, you know, affordable housing. And, and we just aren't turning that corner, getting there faster. But I did make the motion, and council member Weiss, I think you seconded?
I did.
Did, did you want to speak further? Thank you, go ahead.
So just to tag on to what council member Joyce was saying, and I think the 1,900 a month is going to be high compared to when they do the actual calculations. And by way of example, there are condominiums being built at Old Grove and Frazee by KB Homes. 11 of those units have to be affordable, and I had staff look into what the max sales price is going to be. So for the low-income condos that are there, the maximum sales price is going to be about $185,000, which translates into about a $1,400 a month house payment. That's for a family of three. So for those of you who are interested in that, apparently, on the city's housing department's website, you can sign up as, to be put on a list, to be referred to that developer, because they're selling the other homes for like 700 to 900,000, but the affordable ones can't sell for more than about 185. So even though there are only 10% affordable in some of these projects, the actual calculation of what is affordable reduces the cost to where it is pretty affordable to get into it.
And just, just a reminder that there is a clause in here that none of them can be rented out for less than 30, 30 days, 31? 30 days? All right, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We have, how many speakers? We have 15?
Well, we have the advanced written requests.
That's, we should probably go to there. First, let me do this, let me do number 18. I did present my recommendations for appointments. These were, these were vacancies based on people leaving before, most, almost all of them, before their term. So I, I move approval. Do I? Okay, there's a motion and a second, please vote.
You have a speaker on this.
Oh.
Linda Walsh.
I'll just be brief. Linda Walsh again. I just wanted to say thank you for scheduling this for more appointments to the commissions. We really need more good people that are volunteering for these committees and commissions. It's so important that we have a quorum for each one of these things, so that there's never a meeting missed, because there's so many urgent issues facing us on housing and the manufactured home communities and everything. So thank you for stepping up the, the appointments, and I hope more people will volunteer and sign up to be on these committees and commissions. It's a lot of work, but it's certainly worth it, and you can make a difference in your community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item, now this is advanced written request to reserve time to speak. So A, Mr. Ken Layton?
This is Ken Layton, Madam Mayor and councilmen. Back in the golden days, our city leaders, who were Republican, generally were businessmen. You know, upright rotary clubs, city father types who ran businesses. They paid taxes, rent and payroll. Boy, have things changed. Now, our city council Republicans collect multiple pensions and disability payouts on top of their council pay. In fact, every single current city council person came out of the public sector. Is this a bad thing? Well, let's look at how the city treats businesses on our major, most visible thoroughfare coast highway. Every business person I spoke to on the coast highway says they are against the road diet that's, that's coming up, that cuts their number of lanes in half. These business folks unanimously decry the building of five coast highway roundabouts crammed in one mile. Some say this massive highway redesign will kill their business. These business owners say they were never informed or brought into the discussion. The city says, but we had ad hoc committees and we had street banners. Well, guess what? Not everyone is a city hall nerd. These busy business people say they got no details and they were never specifically invited into discussions. When South O got the message, it said loud and clear, no, thank you. One would think the Chamber of Commerce would have made an effort to tell businesses how they could give input. I think it didn't do it, because it knew the answer was no, they wouldn't like it. Nevertheless, Scott Ashton, representing local businesses and his chamber, said everyone just love, loves all these lovely new changes. That is a lie. Businesses do not want it, and they weren't even asked. This council adores sales tax. Let's pass Prop X so we can get more. But this council seemingly has no clue that there are actually real people out there who are actually collecting this sales tax with their cash registers and who say they will tank with these new roundabouts. Carlsbad phases them, these new roundabouts in as data is collected and digested. Oceanside acts like Jethro from Beverly Hillbillies, discovering the cement pond. Let's get us a whole heaping helping of them, their roundabouts, and line them up right next close to each other. We doggies. This is hillbilly city planning. Worse, this roundabout explosion will take a toll on public safety. Fire trucks rush up and down coast highway all day and night. That's what they do. Five years ago, the current fire chief told me, fire trucks avoid streets with dips and traffic calming humps, because it's hard on the trucks and it really slows, it slows them down. And now we want to put five on coast highway, most of them two blocks apart. What's changed? Are the laws of physics different now? Meanwhile, planning people who know what's best, they roundabouts are so lovely in La Jolla. Really? How about we provide necessary public safety in Oceanside? One solution, let's just have two roundabouts, say at Sports Fisher and Wisconsin, so that first responders from the new fire station number one will only have to negotiate one roundabout going either north or south on coast highway. Please don't sell our businesses and our safety providers short for a menagerie, a roundabout menagerie, that will make our parking nightmare downtown even worse. Thank you.
Wow. Right on the time. Richard Newton?
Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public. I'd like to continue with where I left off at the last meeting on an off-agenda item. But first, I'd like to start by pointing out how disappointed I am with Mayor Sanchez. The last council meeting lasted only about an hour and a half. We were done by 6:30 PM. 15 citizens had signed up to speak on off-agenda topics. People who took the time and effort to come here and express their concerns. They had every right to be heard. Mayor Sanchez, however, apparently didn't want to be bothered listening to the concerns of her constituents. And so she reduced the off-agenda speaking time to only two minutes per speaker from the prescribed three minutes. That would have added only 15 minutes to already very short meeting. I guess an extra 15 minutes to listen to the commoners was too much of a burden. As such, it is very difficult for us commoners to express our concerns. It's worth noting that when items of personal concern to you, Mayor Sanchez, are on the agenda, you have no problem talking ad nauseam into the late night hours, as you did on December 6th, when you wanted to fly a rainbow flag on the city's flagpole and kept the meeting going until 11:00 PM. Shame on you. The people of Oceanside deserve better than your elitism and disdain for us commoners. So continuing with my off-agenda topic from the last meeting, I'd like to talk more about the reliance of experts on the city's climate action plan. But first, I must call out yet more censorship. These meetings are televised on KOCT and can be seen later on YouTube. That is so that the public at large can observe these hearings and be knowledgeable about public policies and comments. There are multiple cameras in this chamber that cover both the podiums, the council members at the dais, and the screen where projected items are displayed for speakers during their presentation. They say a picture is worth a thousand words, and when a speaker presents a visual display, that item is material and germane to their comments, is part of their message. Mayor Sanchez seems to be aware of the importance of these displays, because whenever a city staff member is making a presentation, the cameras focus on the visual displays presented by city staff, not the speaker at the podium, the staffer at the podium. However, when a member of the public speaks, the camera coverage is almost always ignoring the visually projected displays, the, the projected visual displays, and keeps the camera on the speaker at the podium. This is yet another form of censoring public comment, and again, shows disregard for the public's input. This concern was brought to you several times, Mayor Sanchez. You dodged the responsibility and blamed KOCT, but this is your chamber to run. I'm sure that a simple phone call from you as mayor to KOCT, asking them to focus the cameras on the visual display as the public, on the public, as they currently do for staff presentations, is all it would take to remedy this. The technology and equipment are already there. All it takes is the desire. But it seems that once again, that you just want to stifle public comment. So at the last meeting, I showed multiple news articles and photographs listing numerous errors that were made by the so-called experts, but these were not shown to the televised audience. But the point was clear, experts are fallible and can make mistakes. They often do, and we should always take their recommendations with caution. But I'd like to take that skepticism to the next level. What is the role that money and government grants play in influencing expert opinions? In other words, can money corrupt experts? I guess the first example of this is in court hearings, where each side will often present experts, and those experts reach diametrically opposed conclusions that benefit the positions of their paymasters. Even if the corruption is, even if corruption is not at play, conflicting expert opinions point out the fallibility of experts, because at least one of them is wrong. So what influence do billions of dollars in government grants have on experts? I'm running out of time, so I'll give just one obvious example. For decades, a woman was defined as an adult female, and a female was defined as having two X chromosomes. It was pretty simple. Now, after being influenced by government grants and making it pretty clear to researchers that the answer the government wanted, experts are now finding a multitude of genders, including such positions as women can have penises or simply menstruating persons. Something obviously, something obviously false to any rational thinker. Logically, if one can show that a single expert is wrong or corrupt, then the broader conclusion must be to be skeptical of any expert. They tell us to believe the experts, but clearly, we should remain skeptical. In determining Oceanside's climate action plan, which may impose significant costs and regulatory burdens on its citizens, I ask you to move with caution and prudence, remaining skeptical of what experts have told us about the so-called climate emergency. And ask, how are these experts making their money by pushing this, these claims? Thank you.
Thank you, next is Sandra Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. At the February 28th meeting, I said Mayor Sanchez had contracted COVID a few months ago. And in fact, that was in October of 2023. I said I assumed that Mayor Sanchez had gotten her COVID shot prior to catching COVID. Mayor Sanchez replied, not before, I got it afterward, indicating that she received her COVID shot after contracting COVID. This really surprised me, because I, because Mayor Sanchez had been promoting the COVID shot since it became available. So I did some research and found a number of posts on the City of Oceanside's Instagram page showing Mayor Sanchez receiving the injection. The post showed that she received her second COVID vaccine on April 7th, 2021, much earlier than October 2023. So I'm confused, and I can question the veracity. Is Mayor Sanchez's, I'm looking at different options here. Is Mayor Sanchez's memory faulty on this important health issue? If she doesn't know her own health history, is she capable of serving the public in her current capacity?
Well, I guess I'll stop you right there, so that, you know, I've had several shots this season. I did not take it in time this season. It doesn't last two years, it doesn't last three years. So I don't know what the point of this is. I, I got my shot after I contracted COVID. I also got it before.
You got it before?
The year before, the year before. So honestly.
Look, I was speaking last time to point out.
I have no idea why you care so much about my COVID shots. You know, that is actually a very personal thing, but I am willing to go public and say, yes, I believe in the vaccinations. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Now I'll go ahead and let you continue your speech.
Glad you have your beliefs. All of us have our own beliefs. I'm sorry?
I said I let you continue your speech.
Thank you for your input.
About me and my personal life. Thank you.
No, it's, I don't know. I don't know your personal life. All I know is what was posted and what was said. The reason I do these presentations is to actually educate the public. What you do or don't do, unless it affects the public, doesn't concern me. So what I was trying to do last, last two weeks ago, is I was explaining that if someone caught COVID after they received a COVID vaccine, that attests to the ineffect, inefficacy, inefficacy of the shot. And the, the shot should, the result should be reported on VAERS, which is the Vaccine Adverse Reporting System. If someone went to see their doctor when they had COVID, after they had a COVID shot, they should have, your doctor should have reported it, though many are not. As we know, some of us know, those of us that bother to take the time to read the trials, read all the data, we know the shot's been ineffective. Even Rochelle Walensky, Janet Woodcock, all those people have agreed that they went ahead and pretended that the shot worked, knowing full well that it didn't. All this is fully documented.
I am not pretending it actually works for me. Thank you.
Well, you, you can, you know, everybody can believe what they want. I believe based on science and facts and reading the documentation. So anyways, that is the reason I come here. I've had almost twenty friends die from this shot. I've had many, many injured from this shot. And I suspect that most of us know someone that has either been killed or damaged from this shot. It's an awareness that people need to have. It's something that has been highly censored and is obviously a very contentious issue, which as issues that involve fear and propaganda are. But I am here to help people surf through this mess and to educate people that are willing to listen. If people don't want to listen, that's fine. And that's all apart about being in this country is being able to express your views. You and I, Mayor, often do not agree on things and that's part of the beauty of this country. We don't have to agree on things, but we do have to be able to express our beliefs and how it affects ourselves and others. So that's really why I come to these things. Last time I was trying to inform people about the children's health defense bus and it has a safe place for vaccine victims to go and share their information because there are no safe spaces to do that. People that have been victimized, stunned and terrorized that have been injured and share their stories. That is not the way it should be. People should be allowed to share their truth, no matter how offensive it is to other, even if people don't agree with it. Or, you know, that's just how it is here and that's part of this country. So I thank you, Mayor, for clarifying the contradictions that I perceived in your statement last week. But it does attest to the fact that the injection does not prevent COVID. I understand you believe that you need to get regular injections. I believe some people are up to number ten now, their tenth injection. But scientifically, that proves an injection, a vaccine does not work and it should be reported to VAERS. Thank you for your time.
Well, I'll just take this, um, point of personal privilege, just, uh, another couple of seconds here. That was totally irrelevant to your point. Flu shots are every year. You take one flu shot, it's not going to last ten years, you know, so, um, but just outside of me, you can talk about anything else. It's just that I'm going to correct any information that you present that is not true. Thank you very much. So next person is, um, Nathan Lacy.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Nathan Lacy and I'm here tonight as an Oceanside resident in District Three. As a Jew whose direct family experienced the Holocaust and most importantly, as a human. I want to start by thanking those in our community who have been taking direct action, spoken at previous city council meetings and those taking part in a global shutdown action led by Palestinian youth movement that was held today. I also want to say, shame on you, council, deputy mayor and mayor, because you have been like ostriches with your heads in the sand. I hope you continue to be held responsible for your cowardly inaction in the face of this blatant, ongoing genocide against Palestinians. Before I get to my call for the council, here are some facts. According to the Associated Press, over twenty people have recently died from malnutrition and dehydration alone, beyond the over thirty-one thousand people already murdered. This includes women, children and the elderly. Meanwhile, Haaretz, an Israeli newspaper, has even reported that hundreds of Israelis are blocking any humanitarian aid from being delivered to those who need it most. Aid is also being airdropped into Gaza, but has either fallen into the sea or crushed people needing that aid. With all that being said, how can the council continue to support this genocide of people who are extremely vulnerable and oppressed? I am continuing the call for this council to reject genocide, call for an immediate stop to Israeli aggression, delivery of aid, enact a ceasefire resolution and call to end the illegal siege and blockade of Gaza. The council owes its constituents and humanity this bare minimum action and has the means to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we are now on items, um, not on the agenda that were not, um, did not have, um, written request, um, advance written request. So that's item number seventeen. Do we have fifteen there?
Yeah, currently sixteen speakers.
Sixteen, okay, so we'll be, uh, two minutes, starting with Carissa May, followed by Bonnie May, followed by Fern. We do have two podiums. Um, so if you can, approach the second podium as well. Thank you. Ms. May?
Madam Mayor, Council. I'm Reverend Carissa May from Grace and Peace Church in Oceanside. Oceanside resident twenty-five years, former Camp Pendleton Marine, honorably discharged, member of Veterans for Peace. I stood here two weeks ago, asking you to hear my plea that Oceanside take a leadership role in the state and be counted among the first in California to cry out for a ceasefire in Gaza, bringing a much too late end to the genocide of Palestinian people and making way for humanitarian aid. I listened as other impassioned voices followed and I watched. I watched a seemingly disinterested council member look at their phone and another work on their laptop. I watched one council member roll their eyes and another leave the table while a constituent was addressing you all as our elected officials. Is it uncomfortable to be confronted? Are you weary of rhetoric? You were elected to listen and to craft informed responses, so please listen and be informed and act responsibly. Two weeks have passed and the death toll has risen and your silence is deafening. By turning a blind eye, you have been complicit in two more weeks of brutal injustice. Lemon Grove heard their people and joined the cry for justice, as did Ojai, San Francisco, Oakland and Richmond. You are behind the Bay Area. They will be remembered on the right side of history. So I'll ask again. Declare the position that Oceanside abhors all violence and oppression and seeks a permanent ceasefire in Gaza for the sake of all people. Free Palestine.
Next is, um, is it Bonnie May?
Yep.
Followed by Fern, followed, followed by Christina.
My name is Bonnie May and I'm here to demand that the Oceanside City Council pass a resolution calling for an immediate, permanent ceasefire in Gaza, an end to the occupation of Palestine and the uninhibited provision of humanitarian aid to Palestinians. This is a local issue. Over thirty thousand men, women, children, elderly, disabled people and babies have been brutally murdered before our eyes for over a hundred and fifty days with our taxpayer money. An estimated $2 million worth of Oceanside's taxpayer money is allocated to the Israeli military annually, directly supporting the genocide of the Palestinian people. Meanwhile, our own people in Oceanside suffer from uncontrollable rent increases, lack of social programming, unaffordable medical bills, increasingly inaccessible green spaces, abandoned wildlife corridors and poor stormwater management. Today has been declared a global day of action and solidarity with Palestine. We are here to urge you to take action, just as fellow California cities of Lemon Grove, Richmond, Oakland, San Francisco, Ojai and others have passed ceasefire resolutions. This is an opportunity to stand with humanity, with Gaza and with your constituents. This is a local issue. No more Oceanside tax dollars should be used to fund senseless military occupation and genocide. No more Oceanside tax dollars should be used to justify the forced migration of indigenous people from their land. And no more Oceanside tax dollars should be used to provide healthcare, housing and education to Israeli citizens, while our own residents have to weigh whether they want to purchase basic necessities or pay rent this month. This is a local issue. As our city council, we have voted you into your positions to represent us and you are failing. And if you choose to continue to ignore the demands of your constituents, we will continue to mobilize our communities to vote against you in future elections. Your job is to represent and we demand that you represent us. This is a local issue. Free Palestine.
Fern? Fern? Go ahead, get started. After Fern, Christina.
Greetings, my name is Fern. I address the city council. Um, myself as a lifelong resident of Oceanside to address that your title, your term is a privilege. Your responsibility in that privilege is to listen to oppressed people, listen to the stories, the pleas to end a genocide. I'll share this poem, the spoken word, this art that was published on NOR nursery books. And I invite you to listen. And I demand that you support a permanent ceasefire that is enacting a genocide on the Palestinian people. I eat breakfast while Palestine is being bombed. I cook lunch while Palestinian people are being bombed. I greet my colleagues while Palestinians are being bombed. I go to the supermarket while Palestinians are being bombed. This council recognizes women's first remon. While there are Palestinian girls having their first period under a genocide, no access to sanitary products. I do the dishes while Palestinians are being bombed. I watch on TV Palestinians getting bombed while Palestinians are being bombed. I check Instagram while Palestinians are being bombed. I drive down Coast Highway while Palestinians are being bombed. I drive home down Mission Avenue while Palestinians are being bombed. I walk into this chamber while Palestinians are being bombed. You get to go home and hug your loved ones while Palestinians are being bombed. You get to sit there and breathe while Palestinians are being bombed.
Thank you, Christina, followed by Quinn.
Thank you, my name is Christina and your unavoidable attention would be appreciated. I took this statement directly from the city council's webpage. The city council's mission is to represent the citizens of Oceanside, make policy decisions, exercise fiscal responsibility and authority, serve the best interests of all citizens and ensure that Oceanside is a desirable place to live, do business and to visit and work. As of right now, you are failing to uphold your mission statement. The citizens of Oceanside are here and have been here asking you to represent them, represent them in the fight for justice and humanity. I'm in disbelief that someone who doesn't agree with the horrendous brutalities happening in Palestine would stay silent about it, especially someones who have the voice to make a difference. Our voice can make a difference. You have seen proof of that. Other cities across the country have shown us that. More recently, right here in our own county of San Diego, Lemon Grove has passed a resolution for a permanent and immediate ceasefire. You have the authority and you are not exercising it. I'm a ceasefire is needed now. Please do not limit your concerns to what's on the borders of Oceanside. Your constituents come from all backgrounds of life. Your mission statement claims all citizens. For you to turn a blind eye and disregard this matter like human lives aren't being destroyed as we speak is absolutely despicable to me. Day after day for five months now, we have witnessed Palestinian women sniped down, babies blown to pieces and men run over alive by Israeli military tanks. If that doesn't put a lump in your throat and light an enraging fire in the pit of your soul, then I don't think you have one. Please stop making this more complicated and difficult than it needs to be. We are here begging you to help us save humanity. Demanding for a ceasefire is not anti-Semitic.
Thank you very much.
Ceasefire is not radical. Demanding for a ceasefire is
Thank you.
virtuous and it's necessary.
Thank you. Quinn? 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 Followed by Anna Maria Hallman.
Good evening, people of Oceanside. Taking my place here at the very end of this docket to raise alarm that $2 million of Oceanside resident taxation is on track to continue funding this genocide and proportionally, the extinction of Palestinians. $2 million could eliminate the student debt of fifty-eight residents, provide healthcare coverage to seven hundred and seventy-four children, provide, uh, housing for two hundred and sixty-four and still remain a notable sum to be applied towards cultural vibrancy, which seems to be such importance in this evening. To my, to the best of my knowledge, this city is pleasantly complicit and tax revenue going hand over fist towards Israel's rent, weapons and hegemony. To the best of our city's ability, I demand we prove that we are capable of seeing through this rampant nepotism. Look behind me. These are your citizens crying out, coming here week after week after week, saying exactly the same thing. And they're getting the same responses, so they're going to keep saying the same things until things change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anna Maria Hallman, followed by Shelley Parker, followed by Macy.
Okay, I don't really have a whole thing planned out because I feel like I've had the speech and everything written on it and it didn't really matter. I've emailed all of you, no one has returned an email to me. So that's, and it hasn't just been one time, it's been several times. It's getting to the point where it, it, like, you're blatantly ignoring us. Like, why can't someone at least return an email and be like, I saw what you read or what you wrote, you know? That's the side of the point. I'm here and other folks have told me not to drag you all, which I don't think I have done. I'm here because I do this out of love. I am here because I love humanity. I love life. I want children and women and elderly folks and everybody to live as best as they can. And this includes in Palestine, of course. I'm afraid that perhaps you all are running out of love. I'm not sure if maybe your politic has taken over your humanity is what it seems like at this point. Um, I feel like perhaps no one here on the council wants to rock boat because y'all are waiting for election, right? But look, look at the council, look who's here right now. This is, this is young people. These are, this is Gen Z, you know, that, that everybody is, is apparently so either afraid of that they want to ban TikTok, which is so stupid, but, um, ignoring the younger voters is not a smart move. Look who's here right now, okay? Okay. So that's really all I want to say. I just feel like y'all are ignoring us, you're not taking us seriously and you really need to. That's it. Because of the, all the, this undivressed council has got to go.
Thank you very much. Um, Shelley Parker, followed by Macy, followed by Erin Moran.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a left turn here. I'm Shelley Parker. I live in Rancho San Luis Rey. The stakeholders in Rancho San Luis Rey were approached by John Saunders, a representative of John Saunders in this last week about a very scary subject. It's called subdivision. And we've had a run at subdivision in another mobile home park uh, in two thousand and thirteen, which did not pass thankfully. I think that the person who was representing John didn't realize how educated we were because we kind of talked back to him. But I am here at council just to say that this issue is rising again. I will be speaking at the Manufactured Fair Practices about it. I will be speaking at the Housing Commission, which I am on, as you all know about it. Um, we are going to be gathering signatures from, now that there's 28 rental homes in our park. So, and we are 433, so 400 and whatever that comes to. Signatures that say we don't want this. And I just wanted to inform council so that you knew that it was raising, raising its ugly head again. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Shelley. Macy, followed by Erin Moran, followed by Isabella Abril.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm sure you know why I'm standing before you today as it is the 159th day of war against innocent civilians in Gaza. Since October, I've heard all of the talking points. Hamas hides behind human shields and beds themselves in schools. If there was a school shooter, would we bomb the school to get rid of the shooter? If there was a terrorist in our subway system, would we airstrike the subway? This is how Israel operates against civilians in Gaza. Finally, after months of silence, a growing number of congress members are reminding the president it is against the law of our land to provide weapons to countries restricting humanitarian aid from the United States. I don't know why it takes so much courage to show your humanity politically. This is a society in decline when the majority of Americans are disgusted and saddened by the tragic loss of life in Gaza, and yet so few of our representatives will take a stance against genocide. As more cities across the nation pass symbolic ceasefire resolutions within their city councils, as the tide keeps turning against Biden and Mike Levin and every other politician that shamelessly supports and enables this. As more children die of starvation, as more women become mothers in war zones, as more orphaned teenagers turn to resistance, as more fathers pull their dead children out of the rubble, the clock is ticking for you to join the right side of history in the majority of Americans that say this is unacceptable, that this is not a good use of our public tax dollars, that this is not what humanity stands for. Please consider discussing this together in your chambers, putting it forward in the agenda and voting yes on an end to the bloodshed and a path towards peace.
Thank you very much. Erin. Followed by Isabella Abril, followed by Baxter Williams.
I'm gonna make this real quick. Okay. We had a very interesting visitor from, out from Pendleton, our little sneaky cat friend, Mountain Lion. And I, I brought some brochures around and I did some research. And the thing is, is that these cats are nocturnal, number one. Number two, um, my dad was an avid hunter, and I know a lot about these animals and, and the environment they're in from. Yes. The thing is, is that they do, I do believe they come off of Camp Pendleton area, and they come into our city. Unfortunately, because of the bombs and the rest of the things that are going on in base, and they're probably expanding, expanding their, for their soldiers and the exercises and all that stuff. It does, it does make them scat out and, and come out into the city. So what we need to do is we need to work with animal control or some, or fishing game and wildlife. And we also need to have the, the commission to come back up because these are, these are things that we need, we need to have. And into our climate action plan, yes. For our environmental impact report, yes. Because if we're gonna see more and more of what's going on on Pendleton and these, and the wild animals are gonna start coming in here, we gotta learn more and more and how they're, how they're coming in and stuff like that. So that is all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isabella Abril, and I just want to thank Esther for what you were commenting on earlier about the cultural district here in Oceanside. I am a local poet and writer, and you moved me especially when you said that young folks here in Oceanside having dreams and expanding their talents. And I have been a resident in Oceanside for 20 years. I've attended kindergarten through high school and even gone to Cal State San Marcos while living in Oceanside, graduated top of my class. And I just want to take a moment to say that I have joined the workforce now, work a white collar job, proud of that. And I completely disagree with what you are doing with my taxpayer money, over $2 million. And I, I can't believe it. I, I've lived in this city. I've loved this city. And I plan on continuing to live here, but this is unacceptable. I do not go to work every day to have my money be used to kill innocent people, civilians. I, I just cannot express anything but shame on you. I love the city. I voted for you, Esther. You were my first election. I was so proud to vote for you. Why don't you add the ceasefire resolution on the agenda? I have been coming to city council meetings, and the meetings that I have missed were because I was at work generating more taxpayer money. Please, you hear all of us. We come back. This is redundant now, and I saw you smile when I was giving you praise. You hear me. Why don't you listen? We need a permanent ceasefire resolution. Free Palestine and shame on you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Baxter Williams, followed by Liz C. Liz C.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and city attorney. My name is Baxter Williams, and you're probably wondering why a young man like myself is here speaking to you on a Wednesday evening. And it's because I'm here to kind of represent the younger people as you start to hear more about neighborhoods are for neighbors. I'm a renter here in Oceanside, and my roommates and I all wear many hats. Between juggling the costs and work and the time commitments of being a full-time student and working a full-time job and trying to get a little bit of surfing time in when I can, I don't get much, and the quality, in my quality of life, the young person here in Oceanside is decreasing because of it. It's not easy to afford even a shared rental here. And the thought of even owning a home ever in San Diego County, let alone Oceanside, is unfathomable at this point because there isn't enough low-income housing opportunities. When I look around and I see lots of vacation rentals as well that are going for up to $3,000 a night, it's no wonder that it's impossibly hard for people like me to find year-round housing that's affordable at some, like a level that I need. Uh, Oceanside needs people my age, though. We need to work here. Uh, we fill the schools. And we're the, we're the next generation that's coming in who's gonna be spending money here and creating a place for you to look over. Uh, so please, I just ask, uh, council members and mayor, as you hear more all about, uh, short-term rentals that have been scooped up by all the corporations here, and, uh, I just want you guys to consider young people and the housing prices as you decide to make decisions about how you guys are gonna be overlooking the short-term rental stuff here and especially the ones that are owned by corporations. Uh, I want to be able to work and continue to live here for the rest of my life. And if we just have more and more short-term rentals that are coming in and taking up all the available, uh, properties, there's gonna be nowhere left for people like me to stay here and raise families. Uh, thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you. Liz C., followed by Roy Burgazza, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. My name is Liz Carnes. I live here in Oceanside. I have a business here in Oceanside. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Please do not consider adding a ceasefire resolution to the Oceanside City Council now or ever. Any call for ceasefire should be conditional on the complete dismantling of Hamas and the immediate and unconditional release of the more than 130 hostages who were kidnapped and who are still being held against their will in tunnels underground for 159 days. Our kidnapped hostages are conveniently omitted from what our pro-terrorist and pro-Hamas friends have to speak about. As a city council, you represent your local residents and municipal decisions. If the city council were to engage in international affairs, you would likely need to vote on other various matters as well, such as the ongoing war in Syria, the Yemen civil war, the Rohingya crisis, the South Sudanese civil war. On October 7th, there was an existing ceasefire. The terrorist organization attacked, murdered, raped, kidnapped innocent people. Over 130 innocent people are still being held underground by Hamas 159 days ago. At any time during the past 159 days, including today, the ceasefire would be immediate and swift. But they would have to give back our hostages and lay down their arms. Hamas has rejected proposals, pauses, in fighting.
Go ahead.
Hamas has vowed to draw Israel into an eternal war, manipulating public opinion and thwarting the process of normalization that's underway between Israel and its Arab nations, neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Roy Burgazza, followed by Jimmy Knott, followed by Michael Richardson and Deborah Stern.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Roy. I'm a resident in San Diego, District 3. I'm here echoing the sentiments of Nathan and the others who spoke before demanding an immediate ceasefire in, on the siege in Gaza. And I just would like to point out how this, or reiterate the fact that we keep showing up every week, we keep demanding a ceasefire. And I, I think this is something that would be considered a quick win for the council. Doesn't require any allocation of budget money from else, somewhere else to make this happen. This is, this is purely a decree. And, um, I know some of you have children. I know you've seen all the images. I don't know how you can't understand the hypocrisy of supporting of what is happening over there, uh, bombing, some, uh, bombing people or providing the means to bomb a, a population while at the same time working to provide aid. And it's, it's kind of insanity to even, uh, try to do the mental gymnastics it takes to understand how we even got to this place. So I, I don't know how to say it other than just listen to your people that, and ask, we're asking something that wouldn't take much. Thank you. Free Palestine.
Thank you. Jimmy Knott, followed by Michael Richardson.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Cherry Lane. I'd like to propose another option. The city of Oceanside should be opposed to oppression and violence against all people. But one fact needs to be dispelled, and I draw your attention to this treaty signed by the United States and representatives of the Mohammonan peoples in 1796. This has the force of law. Article 11, as the government of the United States is not in any sense founded on the Christian religion as it has in itself no character of imitie against the laws, religions, or tranquility of Muslimmen, with their word at that time for Muslims. And as said, states never have entered into any war or act of hostility against any Mohammonan nation. It is declared by the parties that no pretext arising from religious opinions shall ever produce an interruption of the harmony existing between the two countries. I think that the option of taking and being united against oppression and violence against all peoples is something that we all can ascribe to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Richardson. Followed by Deborah Stern, who's last.
Good evening. I just have to speak to these nice, kind, well-meaning, but misguided people here calling for a ceasefire.
Address the council.
Have you forgotten who were the aggressors?
Please, sir.
Have you forgotten who were the aggressors?
Mr. Richardson, could you please address the council?
Have, have they forgotten?
Yes.
Who were the aggressors?
Thank you.
You know, it's estimated that there are, uh, two battalions. That's up to 1,000 fighters each. There are two battalions of Hamas fighters still hiding in the tunnels in Gaza. Plus, hopefully, 100 and plus hostages that maybe, may or may not be alive. If, if they, these people want a ceasefire, they should be talking to Hamas. Because if Hamas laid down their guns and came out of their tunnels and gave up their hostages, today there would be a ceasefire. I call on them to redirect their efforts to getting that done, getting, convincing Hamas to give up and get out and give up their guns. And I, I asked the council not to take a position on this, but if you must, it has to be in favor, in favor of Israel. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah Stern.
I'm here to fight for Oceanside, okay? I live in a neighborhood in Oceanside that the SDRs have obviously affected. But even more than that, I've discovered that it's not just my neighborhood. When you let big organizations come in, big business come in and start buying out our homes, eventually it's going to translate businesses in town. I walked down Oceanside, the Coast Highway. I talked to all the small businesses. It's the small businesses in this town that make this place so wonderful, make it unique, make it a neighborhood. It's those people that now they realize that even though it's affecting the coast, eventually, as it affects even more and more, it's going to come in and it's gonna grab their businesses. And we're gonna see, instead of Beach Break, we're gonna see In-N-Out on the corner. And it's just something to look at. It's an iconic city. It's a wonderful city. I have a grandchild being born next week, okay? I only hope that he will get to witness what I've gotten to be a part of for the last 40 years. You have made this city so walkable, so wonderful. I mean, I can know my barista's name. So just let that continue and make sure that we take care of private homeowners. Let them rent their homes. Just let me know that my neighbor who's renting their home cares about me. That's all I'm asking for.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. We're at general council member comments. Council member Weiss.
Yeah, yes, just to, uh, the, the city manager. I know we just approved, um, moving, advancing the Reed Beach project, but over the next several weeks or so, if we could get an update, um, just a passive memo on what other actions we're taking in regards to sand replenishment and potential retention, whatever, between the core project or whatever else is out there that we're looking at. If we could just get an update, we would be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, council member Joyce.
Just a brief report. I, uh, attended the Parks and Rec Commission last night, so I just want, promised I'd bring forward what they were talking about. They, again, talked about more, uh, money for scholarships for our kids and not only more actual money toward the scholarships, but actually more effective scholarships because, um, there's some trickiness with access, especially those that have more than one child. So, um, just something for us to be looking at as we're coming up on the budget for next year. They also, uh, universally, and I think everybody can agree, thinks that we should be investing in our bathroom infrastructure at our park sites. Um, so I know that, uh, Manny's gonna do some work with, uh, commission on looking at which bathrooms and exactly what they mean and, and they're asking for. And I appreciate him being so engaged with that commission. Uh, but I just wanted to bring those comments forward to you. Um, I, I don't want to put anyone on the spot tonight, but I would like updates on, uh, especially, uh, Sandag and NCTD from time to time because I know we have representatives on those bodies and that they, the decisions that are made, uh, NCTD and Sandag are tremendously important to the citizens of our city. So I'd like to hear, uh, about updates about what's going on that affects especially our city from representatives. Again, not, not putting any pressure on tonight, but I just, I have interest in that, and I hope that we can. hope that we can, we can start that as a regular thing. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is that this day in particular, the 13th, is the somber, which is kind of coincidental that we went into this early a little bit, the fourth anniversary of the COVID shutdown of schools. As a, as a teacher, I remember that Friday, I was a school board member too, so I had all the phone calls from every different direction that schools were shut down, something that we didn't actually think could happen. It was so jarring and it really shut down so much of our, of our world. I just want to encourage people that we experienced a unique and difficult trauma as a collective society during that time and that we have as a society, a pattern of taking these traumas and just like moving past them and not talking about them. But I think it's really important that we reach out to our elders, have conversations with our children about that trauma and process it. Many people lost loved ones and some of us lost friends over it. I hope that you take time to reflect on this and I know that the lesson that I took away from it is that we have to get united again. When it hit the fan, we came together, we cheered for frontline workers, we listened to each other and we took actions to protect one another. And then as it wore on, we struggled to maintain those bonds and we've seen the fabric of society really tearing at itself. But I know that even though we saw some of our worst and most selfish impulses come forward, that we can come back together again. So I encourage everyone to take time and love on each other.
Thank you very much. The council did receive some really good news from our federal representative and Mr. Abrego, if you could describe what that was.
Certainly, I would be happy to. Yes, yes, as council's aware, we did receive some very good news this past week that we were successful thanks to the help of our congressional delegation to secure some funding that'll help cover the cost of some very important local projects. One is a $1 million federal grant that we received to prepare a master plan for John Landis Park, so we're very excited about that. And then also we received a little, over $3 million for annual dredge project. And of course, as you all know, that money is matched dollar for dollar by Camp Pendleton, so we'll have over $6 million to fund this year's annual dredge project, which we expect to be kicking off very soon here. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. It's been on the news. The SoCal has quietly in the background been negotiating with the Clippers, the LA Clippers, but mostly with the Clippers, the Ontario Clippers that are the G League for the Clippers. So if you've seen the, the news, it's been really, really exciting that, yeah, I see that, there we go, that the, this newly branded San Diego Clippers G League is going to be here in Oceanside starting next season. They're, they're finishing their, this season in Ontario. You can see why they would want to move to Oceanside, right? Yeah. So it was very, very exciting. The press conference that happened on Monday, it was, you know, phenomenal. I got to meet the president of the G League, President Sharif, almost twice as tall as me. I felt really funny standing next to him. It's very, very exciting for Oceanside and I, everywhere I go, people seem to be receiving the news, you know, just excited about it. So I'm hearing people say they want to know about tickets and season tickets and the whole thing because as they explained, the G League, about half of the players for the Clippers first spend time at the G League and then go move from there to, so we will be able to see guys, you know, playing who will be with the LA Clippers, who are also getting a new stadium in Los Angeles. So that's pretty exciting. I want to say that I, I want to report that I attended Zell's celebration of life. That was a new word that the pastor made up, you know, Zell, celebration. It was really pretty phenomenal. I want to read, there were over 1,000 people who were at her celebration of life. It was really exhilarating to, to see how, how she touched all of us in Oceanside. Born in Honolulu, Hawaii, Zelara Ann Dwelly, nay, Paradise, lived a rich and fulfilling life dedicated to family, friends and community, always seeking to make meaningful differences in the lives of others. She met, fell in love with and married Gary Dwelly. There was a really nice story about that, how she really was afraid of, of the ocean because actually she was on a camera, a cataract, what is it called? Catamarac, yeah. And she got left. They didn't notice. So they, they were able to pick her up another, another boat. And this is while she was in, oh gosh, forget the island. But anyway, so Gary, her husband, later husband, said, are you the girl that they found in the ocean? That's how that started. It's amazing. After making North County their home in 1978, they embarked on a life filled with love and shared adventures. In 1988, Zell fulfilled a dream with Gary and opened Beach Break Cafe in Oceanside. This local and regional destination came with her warm hospitality and culinary prowess, creating a gathering place for the community that left an indeligible mark on the hearts and palates of those who happened upon or weakened this iconic breakfast lunch spot. She was a successful entrepreneur, amazing friend, devoted and loving wife, mother and grandmother who made Oceanside, Carlsbad, a home for her husband and sons, Mitchell and Harrison. Her friendships and civic-minded contributions were many, including her beach cafe family, the Outrigger Canoe Club, pickleball, actually it was chicle ball, family, South Oceanside PTA family, South O PTA family, Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, visit Oceanside and the California Surf Museum, to name a few, earned her widespread respect and admiration. She is survived by her husband Gary, sons Mitchell and Harrison, grandsons Russell and Reed, brother Billy Glenn and wife Mary, brother Bobby Glenn and wife Diana, Diana, and many loving nieces and nephews and let me say, many Osiders. She was wonderful. And we also have Ida Cunha. I don't know if you all know, remember Ida Cunha? She is a lot, lived in Oceanside for many years. I got a chance to hear from her daughter. Ida passed recently. She states, my parents met in El Toro in the military. My mom's rank in the Marine Corps was corporal. They had six children, five girls and one boy. They lived in San Diego before moving to Wire Mountain. In the early 60s, they bought their first home in Oceanside. My mom belonged to the American GI Forum, which is how I met her, for over 30 years and was a national chairperson of the American GI Forum. She volunteered at Mission San Luis Rey for many years. She also worked for NCTD for over 20 years and worked with the MAC project programs helping migrant workers in the East Side. She really was, you know, I think she was actually in, physically shorter than me, but very tall in, in terms of her, her stature, in terms of getting things done. She had, she had been, gosh, raising money for scholarships through the American GI Forum. I want to say longer than 30 years because I remember her when I was in high school doing all this work. And she's been, she just recently did the last mariachi concert for raising scholarships last year. So that's more than 30 years for sure. Anyway, I do want to adjourn this meeting in her, in her memory and in everything that she's given to the city of Oceanside, as well as again saying goodbye to our dear friend, Zell Dwelly. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned until our next meeting, which is on March 27th, 3:30 PM. Thank you.